Well then, good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Meeting. Ryan Singer, Senior Director of Landuse and Commission Operations, is now going to outline general information about the remote public hearing and how to participate in it.
Verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online to the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please don't close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial and participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another one. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participant ID and the password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. Please note that whether you're accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Please also note that your testimony will be audio only. The commissioners will hear you but will not be able to see you. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be notified and granted temporary speaking privileges by staff, so please listen closely for your name to be called. If you're accessing the hearing online, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you'll be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself and you should see a notice on your screen allowing you to unmute your microphone. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from a list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. To do this, press star six to unmute your phone. Please note that muting and unmuting registered speakers may take a moment, so thank you for your continued patience. For those accessing the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. It is not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register to speak through the dial and participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It's not possible to testify via telephone without having first registered. Please limit your remarks to three minutes and speak clearly into your microphone. There are few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wish to make a team presentation, that team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached, at which point your microphone will be muted. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via livestream, that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony, otherwise you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. The mailing and email address can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that the remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
And with that, if the secretary would begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage portal. Today is Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Barney. Commissioner Barney. Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Sirullo.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin. Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Here.
A quorum is. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, January 20th, 2021.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Scheduling on calendar numbers one through 11, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled on Wednesday, February 17th, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage portal.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 21. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 12 and 13, CD7. Calendar number 12, C20029ZMK. Calendar number 13, N20030ZRK. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 737 Fourth Avenue rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney. Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 14 and 15, CD10. Calendar number 14, C190447ZMK. Calendar number 15, N190448ZRK. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 9114 Fifth Avenue rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 14 and 15. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner. Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet. Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Okay. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar number 14 and 15. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 16, CDs 10 and 11. In the matter of an application for the 16th amendment to the Harlem, East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan and the Harlem, East Harlem Urban Renewal Area. For favorable reports on calendar number 16. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney. Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 16. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 17, CD2, C200169DSM. In the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 65 Spring Street. For a favorable report on calendar number 17, Chair Lago.
I'll note that Commissioner Barney has joined the meeting, so if you could add him to the call. And yes, I vote yes on this item.
Okay. Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Apologies for my tardiness and I vote yes.
Okay. Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Can I just, Madam Secretary, can I just pause? Commissioner Marin is present and hasn't been unmuting himself and I just want to make sure that we're recording his vote and getting this right. So Commissioner Marin, could you unmute your microphone and indicate if you vote, how you voted on the past items?
I'm sorry, I have voted yes on the past votes and it seems like there's an error because I am, I show as unmuted on my side.
Now when I unmute, I show muted now, which is weird, but. Okay, so I'm glad we got that though, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 17. Okay Borough of, Borough of Queens, calendar number 18, CD13, C200190ZMQ. In the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 214-32 Kill Site Avenue rezoning. For a favorable report on calendar number 18. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes, and maybe just to remind the Commissioner Barney if he wanted to record his votes on the prior item.
Okay. Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 18. The next part of the calendar.
Actually, before we move on, if we could just check to see if Commissioner Barney would want to register his vote on, his votes on the items that we considered before you joined.
Yes, I had intended to vote in the affirmative on all of those items.
Great, we'll register that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 31. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 19 and 20, CD4. Calendar number 19, C210103ZMX. Calendar number 20, N210104ZRX. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 1099 Webster Avenue.
We are going to have a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Mark Wepburn, Kevin Corti, William Schur, Adam Rothkrug, Shiva Gomi, and Ronald Schulman.
Thank you. This is Adam Rothkrug. It's our first time doing this, so we apologize in advance and want to thank the Bronx office and the tech team for helping us through the process. Chair Lago, members of the commission, my first slide. My name is Adam Rothkrug and I'm appearing today on behalf of Webster 1099 Realty in connection with an application for a zoning map amendment and text change to create an MIH district affecting our client's property at 1099 Webster Avenue in the East Concourse section of the Bronx. Next slide. The actions are designed to permit construction of two new residential buildings, 100% affordable, containing a total of 238 apartment units to be developed under HPD's Ella program and including first-floor commercial space and below-grade parking. Next slide. The development site consists of 368 frontage along the west side of Webster Avenue between East 166th and East 167th Streets by 100 feet in depth, a total of 36,800 square feet. The total rezoning area includes two additional lots that the applicant does not own or control at the northerly end of the block, both being 100 by 100 sites occupied by existing industrial commercial uses. Those owners have been advised of the action and have no immediate plans to redevelop their properties. The site is currently zoned predominantly M11 with a small R71 strip in the rear and developed with a mix of open parking, auto repair, and a scrap metal facility. The Schur family has owned the subject property for several decades and a longtime residence and property owners and previously manufacturers in the Bronx. Next. Proposed to rezone the property to R7XC24 and to map an MIH district over the property. Next. The R7X zoning would permit the construction of two residential buildings, nine and 11 stories in height, total of 221,000 square feet, 191,000 residential, and 30,000 commercial. In addition, underground parking for 73 cars is proposed, more than double the 30 spaces required by the applicable zoning, which applies only to the commercial uses as the property is in a transit zone and 100% affordable, so no parking required for the residential. The plan submitted, it's next, the plan submitted as part of the application reflected development consisting of two buildings, the corner building being nine stories, 92 feet in height, and the interior building being 11 stories, 111 feet in height, with a combined total of 238 units, 90 units in the corner building and 148 units in the mid-block building, again 100% affordable. The unit mix will include a limited number of studios along with 1, 2, and 3-bedroom apartments. The buildings include large indoor and outdoor recreation spaces that include passive sitting areas as well as areas designed for outdoor exercise and will meet the enterprise green standard. It's anticipated the project will create approximately 350 temporary construction jobs at prevailing wage along with 80 permanent jobs for the commercial and residential uses. Community Board Four supported the application. They put in some recommendations with regard to local hiring and use of local businesses and MBWE preferences and they've already put us in touch with several organizations. We've been in contact already with the Jerome Avenue Revitalization Collaborative with regard to programs that we will try to implement once construction is closer. In addition, the owner, Billy Schur, is a trustee of the Local 32BJ Pension Fund and has entered into an agreement with them with respect to operation of the building. The R7X district was selected after extensive review with the Bronx Office of City Planning as well as councilperson Gibson, who's been supportive throughout in the Borough President's office and is, we believe, is consistent with the building heights and density in the area, which includes Claremont Village to the north, which has many buildings exceeding 20 stories in height. The Volunteers America Building visible just to the left in this rendering and the Triborough Nursing Home to the right in the background. This site has access to public transportation, including buses along Webster and East 167th, the B&amp;D train about a half mile to the west and nearby Millrose Metro North Station, as well as access to open space playgrounds in the area. I'll now turn it over to Shiva Gomi of Off Gang Architects who can briefly run through the plans.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Shiva Gomi, I'm with Off Gang Architects. Thanks, Adam. If you please go to the next slide. So as Adam mentioned, this project features outdoor recreation area and also indoor recreation area. You can see we have 40 feet of backyard setback that creates this nice, great, you know, outdoor recreation area for both buildings. There's going to be sitting and exercise area along with playground for the families and the residents. Next slide, please. Here is a more zoomed in of each building. This is the interior building. You can see they have indoor recreation and laundry room along with outdoor rest space that is accessible for all the residents. Next slide, please. This is the corner building. Again, we have recreation area, interior rec room and outdoor area with exercise and playground. Next slide, please. And this is a typical floor plan. And as Adam mentioned, we have 148 units in building B, the interior building, and 90 dwelling units at the corner building. Next slide, please. And I hand it over.
Okay. Good morning, it's Ron Schulman, Best Development Group. We're advising 1099 Webster Avenue Realty. As Adam mentioned, this project will be financed under the Ella program with HPD and HDC. As you can see, there's a wide variety of affordable rents from the 27% tier all the way up to 77% based on household size and income. This will afford wide affordability for the residents of Community Board Four and the Bronx. We do have 15% for formerly homeless, which is 36 units. And then we'll have MIH, as was mentioned, which will be option number one, which will be 660 permanent affordable housing units. The project will be financed in one transaction, even though there's two buildings, we will finance it together so the project can be built at one time as it's a long rectangular block and a construction feasibility would afford that ease of construction of both buildings at the same time. It was mentioned, I believe, from the commission, we will have social services provided for the formerly homeless folks, 36 families, and we'll hire a social service operator and provider to work with these tenants in the building. That'll be part of our operating budget and that'll be approved, an approved HPD social service agency. The rents, of course, will be moved around a little bit, but no rent will be higher than 77%. And we will also, we have to finalize the floor plans. We need another one, a three-bedroom unit to get to 10% three bedrooms and also a couple more on the two bedrooms. We're striving for 10% three bedrooms and 40%, 40 for two and three bedrooms combined in the project. Adam, back to you.
Yeah. And now Billy Schur is the owner of the property and can just give a little bit of his background.
Good morning, everybody. Appreciate your consideration today. I've been involved in Bronx multifamily for my entire career as a real estate professional, third generation. We've been involved with this property since the late 60s and based on what went on in the borough, we did one other affordable project down on Creston and Burnside, 114 apartments, 12,000 or so square feet of commercial and 40-car parking garage. We think this, this site is perfect for this kind of building and we think it'll change the neighborhood and we hope it'll be well received by the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our formal presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. And now I'll turn it over to the commission for questions. Not seeing any, I will thank the applicant team. I will also note that we do not have any other speakers signed up. I would ask Ryan if others have signed during the course of this hearing.
No, Madam Chair, we have no further speakers on this item.
Okay, this hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 21 and 22, CD1. Calendar number 21, C20210127ZMM. Calendar number 22, N210126ZRM. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Governor's Island text amendments, notice, a remote public hearing is being held by the City Planning Commission in conjunction above your appearance to receive comments related to a draft second supplemental generic environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
We are going to have a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Claire Newman, Wesley O'Brien, and Jack Robbins.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you for having us. I'm Claire Newman, president of the Trust for Governor's Island. We were thrilled to present our vision for Governor's Island at a special presentation on October 5th and appreciated your thoughtful questions. Next, please. The Trust for Governor's Island is a mission-driven not-for-profit that owns and operates the island. We are 100% focused on making Governor's Island an amazing public space for New York City residents. Building upon the creation of an amazing park and cultural resource, we've established a strategic vision built on three pillars. First, stewarding and expanding the island's open space and recreational resources. Second, expanding opportunities for dynamic, diverse arts and culture. And third, making the island an even greater resource for the city through expanding its use as a climate research and education center. Next, please. We believe that the island is ideally and perhaps uniquely positioned to become a global center for climate solutions. This vision laid out by the mayor's office and the trust builds upon the work of existing partners such as the Harbor School, Billion Oyster Project, and others. The island's iconic location, its unique geography, its role in New York City as an authentic public place all mean it can provide a platform to bring together and scale the climate research and policy work so needed to tackle this next big challenge for the city. By taking research and innovation out of the traditional campus environment and putting it in a public place, we believe we can center equity and public engagement in moving climate action forward. Next, please. For us, this starts with attracting an anchor educational or nonprofit research center to create a truly cross-disciplinary hub of learning, research, and engagement. This will be the foundation upon which we can bring a cross-sector approach to the issue and help grow the island as a 365 part of the city's fabric. Next, please. First, it's important to step back and note the history of planning on the island. Mission-oriented development has been envisioned to advance Governor's Island as a great public place. This began with the transfer of the island from federal to local control in 2003, which required a master plan and outlined required, permitted, and prohibited uses on the island. When selecting a winner to develop the island's master plan, GIPAC outlined several key project goals, including mixed uses and revenue generation, which are fully in line with our proposed rezoning. Next, please. In 2020, the master plan was released. It created an award-winning park. It also identified two sites for development to support enhancement of the island as a greater resource for the city as well as to generate revenue to support the island's mission. These are the sites that are now being proposed for rezoning. Next, please. The master plan set the stage for a decade of remarkable transformation. It's worth noting that there have been several RFPs for the South Island and the North Island's historic district over the years. What's been clear from those processes is, one, the need for investment in creating a remarkable place, which the city has now supported. Two, a clear vision for what we want the island to be for New York. And three, a zoning that allows for the fulfillment of the type of mission-oriented development contemplated. Next, please. Thanks to a decade of extraordinary progress, the island presents a fundamentally different proposition than it did in years past, and it has years of planning behind its rezoning proposal. Next, please. We now believe we have an exciting, really once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to deliver on the 20-plus years of planning and advocacy that have led to the delivery of the island as a great public space. This rezoning is critical to delivering on the island's potential and for supporting the vision of a climate center. And as we move on through the ULER process, we will continue our outreach regarding the climate center vision, leading to the release of a solicitation this year. As you've been notified, the Department of City Planning stakeholders and our community advisory council will be involved in that process. In October, we kicked off engagement with our CIC to outline goals specifically focused on public engagement, on the development of equitable workforce and educational pipelines, and on design guidelines. In addition, we will continue to move forward with the activation of the historic district through targeted RFPs focused on attracting educational, cultural, and amenity uses to the island. Next, please. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jack Robbins with FX Collaborative to discuss the urban design framework and planning for the rezoning proposal. Jack?
Thanks, Claire. Next, please. So we began working with DCP and our community advisory council to develop a, by developing a set of urban design principles. These principles are built around preserving and enhancing what makes Governor's Island such an amazing place. Those are things like the park, the historic buildings, the views. And these principles also look forward by encouraging innovative design, resiliency, sustainability, and the flexibility and mix of uses that are needed to make it a viable and dynamic place. Next, please. Specifically, the zoning is designed to attract an anchor institution. Specifically, the zoning is designed to attract an anchor institution and create a twenty-four-seven environment, which can be a challenge without a true residential use. So the envelope reflects the range of building typologies and the permitted uses needed to create that vitality. This includes community facilities, faculty housing and dorms, cultural uses, amenities, office and R and D. We're looking to create synergies between these uses and through this mix, create a vibrant, sustainable place. Next, please. It's important to keep in mind the size that we're talking about here, the scale of these development parcels. You see here an overlay of a Manhattan street grid on those development parcels and a five-minute walking circle from Yankee Pier. This is a large enough scale that we can include a great deal of variety, and that's our goal. And we can create not just a sense of place, but places within a larger district. Next, please. The density is based on achieving a critical mass, and we looked at comparable developments across the country. There are a couple here on the screen that I'm sure you're familiar with, Cornell Tech on Roosevelt Island and Columbia University in Manhattanville. These show us, they're both academic anchors. They show us the kinds of developments that academic institutions are interested in building. But Governor's Island is a very different environment than those two, so the density is considerably less. Again, I want to emphasize that the two point nine eight FAR is just within the development zones. So the park is not included in the dominator of that. And the development, even though it's a lot of Devon, is spread out over a very large area, meaning the density is actually quite low. Next, please. In fact, we are adding to the park with all of the open spaces that you see highlighted in the list on the left and in dark green in the plan on the right. This zoning represents a twenty-eight percent increase in the amount of open space in the South Island. Next, please. The zoning envelope is designed to be flexible and to encourage variety. Greater height is permitted closest to Yankee Pier and the new Yankee Pier Plaza, encouraging greater density closest to transportation. That's just good design practice. This also allows other areas of the development zone to be lesser density or to become open space. We want Governor's Island to be a beacon of innovation, sustainability, and resiliency, not a flat monoculture. And the zoning is designed to encourage that kind of variety and vitality. Now I'm going to turn it over to Wesley to talk about some of the questions that have come up regarding the EIS.
Yes, thanks, Jack. Good morning, commissioners. So I will briefly discuss the EIS transportation analysis. Next slide, please. In order to accommodate the increased number of island users, additional ferry service will need to be provided from both the B and B ferry landing in Lower Manhattan and Pier Six in Brooklyn. The EIS included a robust analysis of the adjacent transportation systems that would be used by people coming to the ferry locations. This included studies of over fifty traffic intersections, seventy pedestrian elements such as sidewalks and crosswalks, and the multiple subway stations and bus lines serving these areas. So this slide provides a summary of the impacted elements per travel mode and the number of impacts that could be fully or partially mitigated. In addition to the standard mitigation measures that are planned, the trust has committed to implement a transportation monitoring program. Because transportation systems are dynamic, this will allow DOT to confirm the projections of the EIS and adjust the identified mitigation measures. Next slide, please. And with that, I will turn it back to Claire.
Thanks, Wesley. At the end of the day, we believe this proposed rezoning is our pathway to, first, delivering on the long-held vision to integrate Governor's Island into the city as a mission-driven three sixty-five place. Second, to generate a revenue stream to help support the island. And then, third, all while creating a one-of-a-kind space to bring together science, policy, arts, and public engagement devoted to pressing issues of climate and the environment in a way that adds value to the city's recovery. We're committed to continuing the planning process with thought to the detailed input we've received to date and studying and addressing comments received to date. I also want to note that we heard the questions from the commission on Monday, for example, about ferry analysis, and we stand ready to answer those today. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Perfect timing. And I'll now ask for questions from the commission. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Claire, good morning. This is Ken Knuckles.
Good morning.
I noted at the community board level, they issued a conditional disapproval and they listed a number of conditions that they wanted addressed, of which I'm sure you are familiar. I believe the 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 vote was twenty-six approving their decision three and seven in abstentia. I was just curious, the seven votes to abstain, do you know what the basis for that was?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Without totally speaking on behalf, of course, of those community board members, there was some discussion at the community board amongst those who would have preferred a favorable with conditions, and so the abstentions were, you know, a mix of both, you know, folks who might have preferred a favorable with conditions and otherwise. We also had a couple of recusals. Those were folks who are members of the Trust for Governor's Island Board.
Okay. I had also asked during the review session, and I didn't have an opportunity to look this up, what is the actual FAR for a C four one zoning classification?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Knuckles. A typical C four one allows for a total FAR of two point oh, one point two five resi, one point oh commercial, and two point oh community facility. However, this proposed rezoning modifies the permitted FAR to be a total of two point nine eight, five resi, two point nine eight commercial and community facility, in part because in an as-of-right scenario, the the denominator of the FAR is created by the entire island, or I guess I should say on the South Island by the full eighty acres, which is being taken down to the thirty-three acres. Hopefully that makes sense.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you. Thank you, Claire. You must have made quite a few of these presentations now. You're getting very good at it, so thank you for that.
That's very kind. Thank you, Commissioner Bernie.
I just, could you speak to to this kind of question, which is a sort of philosophical one? I mean, in your opening slide, you speak about the three pillars of your goals for Governor's Island, open space, arts and culture, and climate. And I'm struggling to make a connection between that and four and a half million square feet of buildable space. And I'm only assuming that part of the agenda here obviously is revenue to support your operations, you know, ala Brooklyn Bridge Park and others. So could you speak a little bit to that? And second of all, I, among others, had asked the question about the ferry service and how you move eight thousand people on and off the island.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So I would say that a big part of it is is the financial number. It is also about trying to create an envelope with enough FAR to really incentivize the creation of a truly cross-sector climate center. And so, you know, on the one hand, we did do a very, very detailed financial analysis, which was reviewed by OMB and was really the result of many hundreds of hours of work. And that looked at what is the break-even number for Governor's Island vis-à-vis its increasing operating expenses over the year, which is approximately the four million square feet that you're seeing here today. In addition to that, we did look across sort of comparable projects, not just in New York City, but across the country that are issue-focused areas with an academic or nonprofit research anchor. And those areas tended to hover in total development between two and a half and eight million square feet with an average of three point seven million square feet. And really, that kind of total FAR is necessary to create the kind of activity required to report or to support the mission that we've laid out. And then on the ferry question, I think Commissioner Levin also asked about this on Monday, and you know, it is worth noting that the EIS assumes, looks at two scenarios, one of which is the academically-driven scenario that we are pursuing. The other looks at an office-driven scenario, and in each chapter of the EIS, the worst case is studied. So for the ferry analysis, the office is what drives that peak hour demand that is so high. As you all know, we're pursuing the academic scenario. Currently, the trust moves about four thousand, has the capacity to move about four thousand passengers an hour during the summer, for example. And so the number is really not that far out off. But most significantly, we don't believe it's going to be the nine thousand. It's going to happen over a long time. And our financial model specifically builds in the additional cost to run more ferries that is then balanced by the creation of the additional square footage. So what we plan to do is, as the demand really manifests on the island, scale up our ferry service in accordance with that demand.
You know, I remember that Calatrava proposed a very elegant bridge over to Governor's Island. I don't know if you've got that in your
This was the gondola.
The gondola.
It was gonna, we, we are, our plans are on the things within our control, which is the ferry service, so.
Okay. So on the issue of the academic complex, I mean, do you have, I mean, Roosevelt Island obviously has a an anchor tenant, Manhattanville also. Do you have somebody in mind that would be your anchor tenant for this proposal?
Yeah, we, during our research process, you know, we've done, gosh, it's closing in on eighteen months or so of research on this now. We have reached out to many different institutions across the country. We obviously have to be mindful of procurement guidelines and making sure this is a competitive process that will occur during, over the course of this future forthcoming RFP. But yes, that outreach has been done. There are many folks who we believe will be interested in this idea and that we expect would respond to a solicitation.
Okay. Okay, good. That was my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Okay. Could you speak to the mitigation measures that were, they weren't described, but you talked about standard mitigation measures with respect to some of the intersections that are going to see impact on the mainland?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. We, it's, it's, you know, dependent. There are different mitigations depending on the impact. But for example, if it's about a traffic light deteriorating a level of service from, I'm going to make this up, a B to a C, then there are ways to change the signal timing in partnership with DOT to better smooth the traffic flow. So that's one example. With respect to crosswalks and pedestrian access, there are often places where we can bubble out and grow the size of the curbs. You know, I'm sure you've seen that popping up around New York where the corners are increased in size to allow for a greater pedestrian capacity. And then vis-à-vis the sort of subway and transportation impacts, one example of a type of mitigation that might happen is, you know, there are older stairwells where the handrails aren't the kind that New York City Transit might put in today. And so by changing the handrails or filling in wells, you can increase the capacity of a stairwell to make sure that from a volume perspective, folks are able to flow up and down the stairs very safely and easily. So those are, you know, there's probably more in that category, but those are a few, I think, key examples. Wesley, anything we should add on that that I missed?
No, Claire, those are, those are the standard mitigation measures that we've included, or rather, the EIS is included.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes, thank you. Claire, since you prioritize prioritize arts and culture as one of the planned predominant presences on the island, what are, what are you doing to catalyze that that kind of activity on the island?
Thanks, Chairman Knuckles. We have, you know, really, I think, many years, thanks to predecessors in the city, long, long before this current proposal of building relationships with arts and cultural nonprofits and educational nonprofits across the city. You know, Billion Oyster Project is home on the island, Lower Manhattan Cultural Council. And then we have, obviously, the Harbor School, of course, but then we have dozens of additional arts and cultural organizations who use the houses in Nolan Park and Colonel's Row on a seasonal basis. We have most recently started an initiative to make Nolan Park really a sort of hub and center of arts and cultural activity on the island. That's where those twenty beautiful houses surrounding the town green are. Where we're in the process of bringing those houses back online and making them habitable year-round with the goal of teneting them with arts and cultural organizations where they can have the ground floors, have exhibits, have performances, have events that can spill out onto the center green. We actually just recently announced four new year-round tenants for Nolan Park, Billion Oyster Project, Shandanken, which runs an artist residency program, Institute for Public Architecture, and then the Beam Center. So we're really hoping over time to continue to grow that in Nolan Park and then obviously elsewhere on the island as appropriate.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair Knuckles. I should also mention public art. Governor's Island is like such an amazing, extraordinary place to present public art, and so that also is a part of our strategic plan and an area where we really help to hope to build on, again, what the island has done so far and add more to that canvas.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. I have a host of questions here. But maybe following on Commissioner Knuckles' questions about use, we see that in both the community board and the borough president recommendations, there's a lot of discussion about the kinds of uses they don't want to see there. And particularly a concern about turning the island into a center for amusements. I think that's been, you know, sharply drawn by the mention of Use Group fifteen. As I read the text, you're only asking to include a merry-go-round, but I wonder if you could elaborate a little bit on this notion of having the island be activated, you know, twenty-four, seven, and what kinds of, what, what, what's the quality of the uses on the island? What kinds of activities are going to fill the public space? Is it going to be an amusement center? Why are you asking to include private beach clubs or boat clubs on the piers? And it's the private aspect of that that's of concern. And then finally, how do we ensure uses that acknowledge that this is an island? How are you planning for this development to meet the waterfront? Will there be ways for people to get down and touch the water and remember that they're still on an island? That's, that's a whole ton of stuff packed together. Feel free to pick and choose.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Levin. I'm gonna do my best, and if I miss something, please let me know. So on the, on the uses planned within the park space, we, you know, we did hear that loud and clear, obviously, from the community board in response to some of their concerns about loopholes or the potential to exploit those use groups. We did significantly scale back what we were proposing for the open space sub-area. The original intent, or I should say, the constant intent is to make sure that we can do things that are in line with the master plan and provide for popular amenities, like a place to get a hot dog or, you know, a place to do a merry-go-round or, you know, that kind of thing. But we believe now with the, with the changes and the scale back, hopefully that addresses some of those concerns we heard from the community board. Happy, obviously, to take further comments on on that. And and really, the vision for the park is to deliver sort of standard park amenities that are recreational opportunities for kids and a place for someone with their family to get a bite to eat or a bottle of water, a cup of coffee, that sort of stuff. And then we've had sort of longstanding requests from the community and a part of the master plan itself is to maybe add space for an amphitheater. So we have added that in as a potential use group in the park open space, but only to the extent it's open air. You know, not really not meant to be an indoor club or theater. With respect to access to the waterfront, the the South Island maps the entire esplanade. It widens the esplanade and maps that as part of the open space. And so the development parcels and the zoning parcels aren't going to be able to build on the esplanade area. And then we, as the trust, are working through a process right now, getting input on design guidelines for the future RFP and also just to steer our own planning, where we have, again, heard loud and clear that folks would like to have areas within the island where they can get down and touch the water, whether that be a beach space or a space to get on the kayak. We have some of that today. But we do think there's opportunities to enlarge that over time, and it's something that, you know, the waterfront waterfront alliance has issued recommendations on as well. But that's really going to be dependent on our sort of own capital projects as we move forward and making sure that that waterfront space is fully integrated and exciting for the community.
Okay, great. Yeah, I know I said, you know, this is all predicated on really one of the genius moves in planning for the island. Okay, great. Um, yeah, I know, I said, you know, this is all predicated on really one of the genius moves in planning for the island. It goes back a long time ago, which is that you plan the open space before laying out the development. And we're now here all focused talking about the development, but usually these projects happen the other way around. You have some developer comes with a giant vision and you're fighting to establish the open space. And I just want to remind us all and compliment the trust on having done it the other way around and provided for excellent open space and sort of set aside the developments, you know, require the development to come later. Um, I want to move on. I have a, um, bunch of questions about the RFP process. The, um, the four and a half million square feet, that is a tremendous amount of development. Are you anticipating that the, that it's going to be undertaken by a single responder to the RFP? Or are you going to RFP out these sites in parcels?
Thank you, Commissioner Levin. I should, um, I should start by saying that some of that strategy is still be work, still being worked out in partnership with City Hall. But, um, to actually answer your question, I think what we intend to do in the current approach is that we would start this year by issuing the solicitation that's really focused on the educational component slash nonprofit research center. And so in that solicitation, we could say, hey, there's all this fantastic space on Governor's Island. There's Liggett Hall. There are these new developments, uh, parcels that have just been rezoned. We really want you to deliver on these important components of the mission, which is about this cross-disciplinary approach to climate problem. Um, and we need you to build at least this much square feet, but you obviously don't have to take it all. That's something that's what we, you know, the reality is it's going to take many years. Then depending on what is selected by that academic institution, we would be well positioned to issue future additional solicitations that, um, may be specific to a parcel or a use type that we still believe would be helpful to the broader sector.
Okay, you know, I, I do think that, um, just as a philosophical or, you know, city planning perspective, um, a model like Battery Park City is much more instructive than, say, a model like Hudson Yards. In the Battery Park City situation, it's a little bit like what you described. The, the public sector, um, remained, um, you know, kept control of the, um, overall project and, planned development over time as the appetite was there to develop various parcels and then was able to adjust to conditions, um, as they changed. You know, the contrast is the Hudson Yards model where the entire thing was given over to one developer. Now, I don't by any means, uh, mean to intend to suggest that this is a Hudson Yards type situation. But I do think that there is, um, great value in the trusts, um, staying involved in doing this over time rather than surrendering the entire four and a half million square feet to a single user. You're not going to get the, um, uh, variety of design, um, and use that you intend to get. And you're also going to, um, place an awful lot of risk on a, on a single project.
Yes, understood.
Um, and then finally, I want to get to the topic that I think has been the, um, the, the crux of what you've heard in the public response so far, and that is the buildings are too tall and you're planning for too much density. And I understand, um, the argument that you've made that you need to get to critical mass. And I'm sure your financial modeling has been thoughtful and detailed, but let's be honest, it does include a lot of assumptions and estimates. And, um, uh, you know, it's really hard to know what exactly is going to be needed, but the truth is you're planning for buildings that are of intimidating scale, um, when looked at from today's perspective. It's hard for me looking at the financial assumptions that you are the financial modeling, the very superficial financial modeling that you, provided to us over the weekend and superficial only because it's, you know, at the thirty thousand foot level. I'm sure you've got detail that goes behind it. But it's hard for us to make any sense of the, um, analysis that leads to the conclusion that four and a half million square feet is really what you need. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, I can't say. But, um, faced with the fear that these buildings are of a scale that are just too intimidating for the island, um, I'm wondering if, um, it wouldn't, well, first off, if you want to respond to the height question, I know you've been asked by the community board and the borough president to reduce maximum heights to hundred and twenty-five feet, which is a scale that is much more familiar, um, given what is already present on the island. But, um, I wonder also if, um, about the possibility of reducing the maximum height significantly at this point and then allowing them to be changed in the future. If, um, a proposal comes up that does make urban design sense for greater height, but that we get to think about that greater height, um, with respect to a particular proposal, rather than the blank check, um, well, I shouldn't call it a blank check, let's call it a baggy sweater. It seems that your envelope now, um, gives you, uh, a, a degree of flexibility that is understandable that you should desire it, but is very problematic from the, um, perspective of the public.
Yes.
At this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Levin. I guess I'll, I will start with height then. You know, of course, we are, we are aware that height is probably the major area of concern and common community board and borough president's office, and we're committed to continuing to work on these issues. As you said, we do believe that some areas of increased height are needed to create a visually interesting and varied skyline to accommodate use groups envisioned on the island and, you know, really to provide flexibility necessary to deliver exciting architecture that is cutting edge, but also cutting edge on issues of sustainability and resilience. Probably the best example of that is the Cornell Tech campus where, um, you know, that academic and office buildings are, um, more mid, I don't know how to describe them, shorter, but then there is the passive house that is about three hundred feet. And so being able to create that envelope that allows for sort of strategic areas for increased height, we think is important to the success of the project and the upcoming solicitation. We do have concerns with a hundred and twenty-five feet in terms of ending up with a monolithic building forms or a monotonous street wall and then really very dramatically limiting the, um, potential for additional open space. And then not to mention that you limit the ability to, um, achieve pretty radical sustainability goals. So again, you know, it's an area we have heard the concerns, we're committed to continuing to work on it. We have, we have concerns with a hundred and twenty-five. On the density, um, you know, again, it's the four million square feet, I realize it sounds like a big number. You know, when you think about it across the island, that taken with the historic buildings across the hundred and seventy-two acres, you're at less than one point oh F A R in total. We, we, we do think that, again, that density, um, we was supported by the financial model, but also is comparable to other similar areas that we studied across the country. You know, we did ex- explain to the community board at their request, um, what, how many square feet? If you just wanted to break even, what's the lowest you could go? Um, and we think that you could take out about five hundred thousand square feet and still achieve a break even from a financial perspective. Um, obviously, you're right that this is based on modeling and assumptions and that, um, as the project evolves, we will always continue to be, um, an entity that is transparent. We have a board of directors that is appointed by the mayor and that includes representatives from the community board and various elected officials. So, you know, as this project evolves, all of this is going to be presented in a, in the public forum of our board meetings as well. And we've committed to go, um, and present to the community board on the responses to the future solicitations too, to make sure that there are continued opportunities for feedback when the specifics around the project come to light.
Thank you.
Fair, if I can just, if I can just add to that, um, to, to underscore, you know, we, we really are trying to encourage variety and diversity. And what we don't want is a, is a flat, monolithic, uh, kind of an environment. So both at the ground level and at the skyline level, you want these moments of, of excitement and that kind of variation, um, is what creates the sort of energy, uh, and excitement. And, uh, the, you know, the, the taller heights are not allowed everywhere. There, it's very deliberate where they are allowed, um, and that's designed to create that kind of variety.
Well, it's a great conversation. I'd look forward, you know, I, we, we, we could talk about this for three hours, but that's, uh, I think I've had more than my time and thank you for your responses.
Thank you, Commissioner Levin.
Probably more like three days. Um, other questions from the commission? Okay, then I will thank the applicant team. And, um, we will now go forward with our standard procedure, which is to recognize public officials. And so we would welcome Madam Borough President Gail Brewer.
Thank you. Um, am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I, um, really do echo the words of Commissioner Levin. And I, um, I think this is the most precious open space perhaps in the entire city. I know Roosevelt Island well, and I have great respect for the work that Cornell Tech is doing there. But it is a very different atmosphere. You can drive there. They're very, uh, you don't have a sense of, you know, pastoral life as you do, you don't have the sense of.
Uh, Madam Borough President, you are muted. Let me ask to meet you.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
We're back.
All right, so the issue is, I'm not supportive for the, some of the reasons that, uh, Commissioner Levin mentioned and that the community board has mentioned. This is, uh, a very different kind of island. And I have to say, the height is part of it. Um, I worry a little bit. I have support for the notion of interdisciplinary climate as a topic. We don't know what the academic institution was. We had a great deal of drama, um, on Roosevelt Island. I was glad that Cornell, a state institution with a great Israeli institution merged. Cornell is, um, beloved and has a hospital here and is known to us. I know Stanford was in the running as an example, maybe they're interested here too, but I was glad we picked Cornell. This is complicated topic. From a plant perspective, yes, I think the building should be lower. I do disagree that it would, you know, that this isn't the place to have a tall, uh, thirty-story, one or two thirty-story buildings. I just don't think that's what this island needs, maybe as Commissioner Levin stated down the line. The community doesn't have the financials and, um, you know, I can understand because every time the, you know, the high school needs a pool, uh, Earth Matters needs composting and garden, uh, uh, youth leagues and public schools need turf and lighting and artists need space. I understand it's about twenty million for the six months a year to manage, as I understand it. And obviously, year-round, it would need more. So I completely understand the need for sustainability and the revenue to go with it. It's just, this is not the place to have. I know, if, if you know, a resort is not the right word, but I do worry. You put in a hotel, you put in faculty housing, you put in, um, you know, people who are working in the hotel. By the way, the union has already called me to say we want to be a union hotel, just so you know, there's a lot going on here. And the hotel could end up being, I know that there's no private club, uh, except mentioned in terms of use group. It's not necessarily in the plan, but you do end up with people from the hotel who might want to have a golf cart to bring them around. Maybe they want to have their yachts at the pier, which is different than, um, those of us coming from Manhattan, uh, to the other side of the island. We have to be so careful that this does not become a place for the rich on one side, even though you might think of it as a place that has sustainability, is providing the revenue, and then on the other hand, open to the public. Yes, there's a lot of open space. I got it. But I just don't think this is the right plan for this location. I know that in terms of the, uh, climate issues, I think that's important. Community Board has some, uh, questions about that more than I do. But I, I think the question is, how do you make it? As I'm sure you want environmental, something that talks about environmental justice. You obviously have to think about the resiliency that the community, that the, uh, city planning and others have outlined, which I think, uh, the trust is thinking about. This obviously is a, an island and we wouldn't want it to be anything, uh, that wasn't, uh, appropriate in terms of resiliency. So this is not Hudson Yard. As you heard, this is certainly not, I don't even think Manhattanville. I know these projects extremely well. Uh, Manhattanville is surrounded by tall buildings. Roosevelt Island has many, uh, private and Mitchell Arms on it that are tall. Um, I hope we don't have cars and there was some discussion about the need, you know, the potential for parking, which brings, uh, cars to the island. It has to really be thought out. And I know that the, um, challenge is going to be taking place at the city council. There'll be a lot more discussion. But I strongly urge you not to accept this plan. I think that there are ways to, uh, provide the, uh, revenue. I know that I hear, uh, constantly from the board chair, whom I have great respect for. In addition to Claire Newman, that the revenue has to be a driver. I got it. But since we don't have the, uh, actual financials, um, and we don't know, uh, you know, this is also, we all sit in the United States as opposed to other countries. Other countries, national government pays for parks. I got it. I have the same problem on Hudson River Park. You got the same problem, uh, for those of you in Brooklyn trying to deal with that challenge. We do have to find a way for government to pay more for parks. Isn't that something that we could also have as a goal? So I'm here to say, not for, not to accept this particular plan, but understand that, uh, with more dialogue and more discussion, hopefully we can get to a, a project that, uh, features some of the need for revenue, but at the same time, is a plan that keeps the public feeling that it is pastoral, that it is not them and us, and that has a sense that this governor's island, which is beyond beloved, beyond beloved, continues to keep the same, uh, sense of openness and available to everybody that continues to make it such a unique experience in the city of New York. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Borough President. Are there questions? Thank you again for your testimony.
Thank you.
We'll now continue with our practice of speakers, five speakers in opposition and then in support and toggling back and forth. Our next speaker will be Thomas Devaney.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Thomas Devaney, Senior Director of Lannister Planning for the Municipal Arts Society. Uh, Governor's Island has quickly become one of New York's most cherished destinations for its unique setting, open space and historical significance. The trust currently rezoning to foster four point three million square feet of development could, could irreparably transform the island as we know it. The massive proposal, the equivalent to one and a half Empire State Buildings, is currently underpinned by assumptions about financial self-sufficiency and how to achieve it. The trust needs to clearly articulate how the dynamics of its short and long-term financial needs are manifested through the plan. For example, how much development is needed to enhance access to Yankee Pier and build a new pedestrian plaza? Or to expand ferry access at multiple locations on the island? Without a better understanding of the development trade-offs needed for the trust to achieve its financial goals, we cannot support the plan as proposed. One of the deficiencies the trust has not adequately explored is, uh, reasonable, less impactful development alternatives. A scenario that ma-, for example, a scenario that maximizes adaptive reuse of the North Island's historic buildings for the Climate Research Center and the substant-, and substantially reduced scale and density of the development on the South Island, uh, uh, must be evaluated. Uh, the Municipal Arts Society has long maintained that the plans for Governor's Island, South Island, must prioritize and preserve open space, while the North Island must support preservation and adaptive reuse of its historic buildings. We have, um, uh, uh, under the plan, the, uh, within the subdiss-, within the South Sub- Sub-District, development would be held to an F A R of two point nine eight and building house would have a height of, uh, would be limited to three hundred feet, which is over three times the height of the cupula at, uh, Liggett Hall, currently the tallest structure on the island. The open split sub- sub-area, uh, the South Island District must, uh, has, uh, doesn't have an allotment of F A R and development rights, but there are certain uses that are allowed. There are no assure, the, we urge the open space sub-area must be designated as parkland. Without parkland protections, there are no assurances the sub-area will remain open space in the future if the trust's financial projections do not go as planned. We recognize the trust faces many challenges in achieving critical mass to ensure vibrant island system of activities and uses requiring substantial revenue sources for upkeep and maintenance, uh, as a year-round destination. But any development of the scale would radically and alt- But any development of this scale would radically and unalterably change Governor's Island. It is imperative that in its pathway to self-sufficiency, the trust explores many more alternatives for creating the lively, resilient, and special.
Thank you, Mr. Devaney. Would you be able to submit your testimony so that we could hear the balance, we could breathe the balance of it?
Yes, I was just going to say that we have longer comments. We're happy to submit them.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Devaney? Thank you for testifying.
Sure.
Our next speaker will be Tammy Meltzer.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Great. Good morning, Chair Lago and esteemed Commissioners. I am Chair of Manhattan Community Board One. Well, Governor's Island falls within our district. It's an extraordinary public resource for our city, state, and nation. In 1997, we testified at a congressional hearing on the future of Governor's Island that we hoped it would be kept as parkland with active recreational space. Further, that one thing Community Board One does not want to see is for it to be converted into some sort of private or semi-private area that would prohibit residents, workers, and tourists from coming to the island. That would include residential communities. This sentiment has remained largely unchanged over the past 24 years, as demonstrated by prevailing opinions presenting during our review of the ULEURP application. On November 9th, dozens of individuals testified in CB1, collected about 160 additional written comments. The majority of the comments have been in opposition to the proposed scale and density and development in favor of preserving and increasing parkland, open space, connection to water, and recreation on the island. We have long supported the trust for Governor's Island, recognized the need for a public-private investment to move the trust's visions forward. On December 24th, we adopted a resolution to serve as our formal recommendation on the ULEURP application. Our vote resulted with a no unless all conditions outlined in the resolution are satisfied. A thing to note is that it also included seven abstentions and three in opposition. These votes were represented between people who do not want to see any development at all on the island, those who do not approve of the scale of the development, even with the modifications, and three of those who wanted to vote in support with conditions instead. I encourage you to all take a careful look at all the details that we have included after crafting it with many hours of review and deliberation. In the interest of time, I'll address only a couple handful of points. Currently, Governor's Island is a modern urban scale and density. The majority of public comments indicated scale and density that gives the island its identity, and a refuge is highly valued. Earlier proposals for the South Island development envisioned much less development, which the trust has now indicated was merely conceptual. However, the public's understanding of the development program was based on the earlier models, and the drastic increase in scale of development is unacceptable. I will cut my remarks short to provide written testimony, so you can read all of our comments. Diana Sweetie, our urban planner for CB1, will speak in more granular detail on the DEIS ULEURP as well as changes from proposed parkland consistent with the deed's parkland restriction terms versus open space and sub areas. More than anything, together with the trust, our elected officials in the Department of City Planning, we hope to ensure that the concerns captured in our resolution and expressed by the public throughout this process are addressed. Thank you for the time and opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Meltzer, for your testimony, but also for your service on the community board.
Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Meltzer? Again, thank you. And our next speaker will be Diana Sweetie.
Good morning. Am I on?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Diana Sweetie. I'm Director of Planning and Land Use at CB1. I'll address certain issues within the ULEURP and the DEIS. New York City does not have a comprehensive plan. The zoning resolution serves to function as the city's comprehensive plan, and it is relied upon to make development predictable. While the proposal provides maximum accessibility for development through the zoning, these wide parameters are problematic, make future development unpredictable, and provide opportunities for potential exploitative development, especially considering that both use and bulk regulations can be further altered through CPC authorizations. A major concern of the proposal is the management and protection of open spaces and parkland. While the open space sub area defined in the proposed zoning does not generate any zoning floor area, zoning still allows uses and structures not typically found in parks. Considered as permitted obstructions and exempt from any floor area or coverage restrictions, buildings and other structures up to 35 feet are allowed when they house permitted uses. Though the trust has expressed a commitment to scaling back the currently proposed development allowances within the open space sub area, it is not enough to afford protection of what was originally intended as public parkland. The zoning must redefine the open space areas and sub areas as public parkland to assure adequate protection and consistency with the deed. The reasonable worst-case development scenario is a critical aspect of the DEIS, and the community believes it is not fully accurate. The DEIS assumes there is no development in the open space sub area, which is not a reasonable assumption, as the zoning does allow for considerable possible development. All the potential activities in the open space sub area associated with the allowable uses were ignored in the worst-case development scenario, and as such, the impacts disclosed in the DEIS are seriously understated. In a letter sent to CB1 by the trust in December, the applicant agreed to change the allowed uses and development in the open space sub area. Buildings would still be allowed with no FAR limit, but the applicant has proposed limiting them to 25 feet, removing certain uses and other changes. While these changes are meaningful, the worst-case development scenario is still incomplete and inaccurate. In addition, parking within the proposed zoning is too flexible. The proposal allows for a max of 150 spaces on each development parcel totaling 300 spaces. Most troublesome is that the zoning would also allow for accessory parking within the open space. While it is reasonable to assume a limited number of vehicular storage for logistical needs, there is no rational basis to justify up to 150 vehicles on each development parcel on an otherwise vehicle-free island. This generous allowance is contrary to the deed and could create incentives to establish more ways for vehicular access to the island for nonessential purposes, create conflicts with park users, and disrupt the unique car-free nature of the island as currently enjoyed. As such, parking allowances within the zoning must be reduced. Finally, base plane is normally measured using curb and street levels, but there is no map streets on the island to control where the base plane is measured from.
Ms. Sweetie, I'm afraid your time is up. And if you would be able to submit your testimony, we would welcome that.
Thank you so much.
And questions for Ms. Sweetie? And I'll again thank you for the testimony and for the service on the community board.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Roger Manning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Roger Manning, co-founder of Metro Area Governor's Island Coalition, MAGIC, and a longtime frequent Governor's Island visitor. We and a citywide land use coalition that we belong to are against this rezoning. The blizzard of details heaped on us by the trust for Governor's Island diverts, diverts from the key issue, which is, what is Governor's Island going to be? Will it be an irreplaceable, one-of-a-kind, green, urban, refuge, historic arts, and educational space that essentially functions as a park even with, even in areas with buildings? Or is it going to be another built-over, privately occupied urban district with value-added landscaping? The trust proposal is too big and extreme and unnecessary, and effectively privatizes the South Island. And the trust's definition of open space is extremely misleading. Better alternatives exist that could fund the island while preserving its function as our shared country place in the city. As Manhattan Community Board One has pointed out, there is no mandate in the deed that notes that the trust must become financially self-sustaining. The trust's own speculative projections state that financial self-sufficiency wouldn't even be achieved under their current plan until 2050. In any case, there should be as few buildings as possible, or as few new buildings as possible, built on the island, and none of these should exceed four stories or the 35-foot height limit in the current zoning. No building currently on the island is above four to five stories. Governor's Island is not the place for density and building, high buildings. The proposed rezoning doesn't legally require developers to build anything resembling that of the current greenwashed climate center marketing. The rezoning encompassing the entire entirety of Governor's Island subjects the vast parkland future encroachment as well. Meanwhile, the current ULEURP processes being conducted remotely during COVID have been found to be in contravention of the provisions of the city charter and city rules as found in the January 15th, 2021 Temporary Restraining Order granted to the Voice of Gowanus Coalition. Meanwhile, thanks to everyone for their work on this and looking forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker will be Peter Malinowski.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, the Commissioners, for allowing me the opportunity to testify here. I really appreciate it. I run the Billion Oyster Project, a nonprofit on Governor's Island, and we have been working in conjunction with the New York Harbor School on the island since 2000, we moved out there in 2010, and first started going out there to work in 2008. That worked out. So we have enjoyed and taken advantage of the beautiful open space and access to the water that exists on Governor's Island, and we're extremely grateful to have the opportunity to, you know, do our business out there and sort of pave the way a little bit for future tenants. While we have, you know, greatly enjoyed the sort of private island that we've had during so much of the year with Harbor School and Billion Oyster Project and a few other tenants, we acknowledge that that is not a permanent, long-term solution that's tenable for the island or for the city. And so we understand that some degree of development is inevitable. And for us, our primary interest in seeing the development on the island is to develop is our businesses, nonprofits, and research institutions that serve the city and take advantage of the location of Governor's Island in the center of New York Harbor and, you know, obviously surrounded by the water. Our work has been focused on improving the ecology and resiliency of New York Harbor since we started doing that work. And so I'm here to speak in, you know, full-throated support of the proposal in that it activates the island in a way that takes advantage of its position in the center of New York Harbor is, you know, creates an opportunity for uses that directly access the water. And as we think about proactive planning for global climate change and rising water levels, there's few cities in the world that have as much work to do at New York City. And I think that, you know, that Governor's Island is well-positioned as a place to, you know, support those evolutions and help springboard New York City into a climate resilient future. And so we at Billion Oyster Project are really excited about the proposal to have a climate and research center on Governor's Island. And thank you all very much for allowing me the time here today to testify. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malinowski. Questions? Commissioner Levin?
Yes, Mr. Malinowski, thanks for being here. And thanks for taking care of those billions of oysters. It's just a really wonderful project. In the ideal, without asking you to reveal too much of your discussions with the trust, in the ideal world, what would the position, what, what activities would, what situation would your organization see itself having on the island? Or would you be moving operations someplace else?
You know, the, we're a small nonprofit, so nothing is, is set in stone for us and are, you know, very existent, relies on the generosity of our supporters. But we definitely, we have very much enjoyed working on the island, and we would like to continue doing that. So our long-term plan includes, you know, a permanent tenancy on the island in one form or another. The opportunity, you know, the way that we've activated that space to date has been to, you know, every year, thousands of public middle, middle school students from all over New York City come out to help us grow and restore oysters and learn about New York Harbor. And the, and the location also allows us direct access to waterfront communities around the city. So we go from Governor's Island to Canarsie, to Soundview Park in the Bronx, up to the Tappan Zee Bridge, you know, to, you know, all the way into Jamaica Bay and all around New York Harbor to do our, to engage communities in the work of restoring New York Harbor. And so that, in that sense, the location works very well for us.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Chaturko.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the students, teachers, staff, and families of the Urban Assembly New York Harbor School. My name is Jeff Chaturko. I'm the proud principal of this amazing high school located on Governor's Island. Over the last six years, a tenure longer than any previous principal on the island, I can assure you that the logistics of running this school is no easy feat. However, with the appropriate support from the Governor's Island Trust and all the members of their team who work to make this awe-inspiring island, which it is each and every day, we are able to provide our exceptional, hands-on maritime education curriculum to our diverse student population and help break them into the maritime job field after graduation. There is no secret that while the New York Harbor School aims to provide this unique program to our students, our school community feels that we have not been properly supported by the New York City Department of Education to reach our goals. We have communicated for years that as a maritime school, Harbor School requires additional specific resources like a pool, additional space, appropriate funding for equipment, and work-based learning opportunities. Not having these resources would be like trying to run a theater program without an auditorium or an art school without additional funding for paint. And now, when Governor's Island, our home, is looking to bring a climate center to the island, we couldn't be more excited to support this work. We are excited about the potential it brings to further develop our own school's growth and the potential it brings to all students of New York City. This vision aligns with our school's mission in educating our diverse city about climate, climate change, while continuing our restoration work around the New York Harbor with our students and staff alongside the Billion Oyster Project. Simultaneously, this initiative creates an opportunity to open the island to the public for the entire year. Most of our school year, from October 31st to May 1st, the island is closed to the public and only opens to its tenants. That, that amounts to only having the island open for four of the 10 months that school is in session. This creates an unrealistic environment for our students, as well as provides difficulties with logistical challenges to running a vibrant school on the closed island. It is our hope that the New York City Department of Education can equally recognize this as an opportunity to engage in conversations with the Governor's Island Trust and our school community to grow and align our work with the city's need to increase, increase our maritime education and climate restoration development. This will directly impact the ability in providing equitable opportunities for our diverse city population to be better represented in the maritime industry. We hope that we can bring representatives from the New York City Department of Education, School Construction Authority, Governor's Island Trust, and our school community together to plan on how the space is used on the island and how this climate center can positively impact our schools and our great city. These next steps would help in satisfying the growing support communicated by countless elected officials, school personnel, and our student and parent populations in satisfying our need for space and appropriate learning environment and tools. This move supports New York City public school students, our unique career and technical education programming, and it helps in breaking down the barriers towards diversity in the maritime industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, both for the testimony and for your service in the public schools. Questions for Mr. Chaturko? Again, thank you. And our next speaker will be Catherine Hughes.
I'm mute. Hello, can you hear me okay?
It's a little bit faint.
Can you hear me better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. My name is Catherine McVeigh Hughes, and I'm here to testify in support of the Climate Solutions Center proposed for Governor's Island. Big cities need parks and open space. When Governor's Island was given to the city in 2003, it was like a miracle. 172 acres of grass and trees and beautiful historic buildings suddenly appearing in New York Harbor for the benefit of all New Yorkers. Governor's Island has a unique character and a unique location, and as a result, has unique needs. Every park needs upkeep and maintenance, and Governor's Island needs all that and more. Support for the ferries that make it possible, and investment to return its beautiful historic buildings to public use. But the vision for Governor's Island is even bigger than this. Not just to be irreplace, an irreplaceable gem of a park like no other, but to become the centerpiece of our city's recovery from COVID and our response to climate change and global warming. More than half of the world's population lives in cities now. Is the world's greatest city the city that all cities aspire to be like? The city that leads the way in confronting the challenges that all cities are facing or will face soon? The city of New York is uniquely positioned to blaze a trail to a future of sustainability, environmental justice, and economic opportunity. My question for you today is this. Surrounded by the waters of the harbor, with the New York skyline as a backdrop, and the Statue of Liberty standing watch on the island's doorstep. doorstep, the supreme symbol of our highest aspirations and our deepest beliefs, and wrapped in the serenity of a great urban park, is there anywhere in America or the entire world better suited to be the home to a climate solution center? As bad as COVID is today, climate change will be worse tomorrow. As unfair and unjust as COVID is, placing the heaviest burdens on those least able to bear them, climate change will weigh even heavier on those same communities. But COVID was a surprise, or at least some, to some in power were able to call it that. Nobody can be surprised by climate change. We know it's coming, and we know how it threatens us. It is the mission of city planning to plan for our future. Nothing in our future demands more comprehensive and far-reaching plans than climate change. At the center of those plans should be hub of innovation, education, research, and social action. Please put Governor's Island on this as this miraculous gift to all New Yorkers and our climate solutions centers on Governor's Island at the center of your plans. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Questions from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alexandra Pinkus.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Alexander Pinkus. I'm an architect and a restaurateur based in New York City. My brother and I are the proprietors of Island Oyster, a full-service waterfront restaurant on Governor's Island, which opened in 2017. It's been operating during the island's six-month public season ever since, including during the pandemic. We also own and operate a number of other waterfront restaurants in New York, including Grand Banks and Drift Inn and Hudson River Park and Pilot and Brooklyn Bridge Park. And in a volunteer capacity, I serve alongside Pete Malinowski on the Board of Directors of the Billion Oyster Project. As the owner of an independent business on Governor's Island, I've been an early believer in its potential as a tremendous public destination in New York City. Governor's Island gives you the space and opportunity not only to escape everyday life, but to reflect back on the rest of the city and appreciate its past, its enormity, and its possibilities. The first time I visited the island, I could not believe that I had lived in New York for 20 years and not been there. Since then, it's become a cherished destination for me and my family. My brother was married there in the hills overlooking the Statue of Liberty. My son loves to circumnavigate the island by scooter and just lay in the grass. And of course, I love to cap off a weekend with a nice cocktail along the water overlooking New York Harbor. We're proud to have played a significant role in the island's transformation, drawing thousands of visitors to experience its rich history, its extraordinary park, and its unique connection to New York Harbor. However, we believe Governor's Island has untapped potential. That's in fact why we moved there. Governor's Island is only open between May and October, with the last ferry typically departing between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. This does not leave any time for your everyday New Yorker to, to visit the island after work during the week. More activity on Governor's Island will allow the trust to deliver on increased connectivity through increased ferry service. This incredible place should be way more accessible to the public and to a growing community of educational and cultural organizations. We're thrilled that the trust has taken the important step to moving forward a plan that will unlock its potential as a one-of-a-kind resource for the city. I've spent the last 15 years working on New York's waterfront and in its waterways. During that time, my interest and concern for the preservation of our natural resources has grown exponentially. That's why our company focuses on sustainability and waste reduction, and why I volunteer and raise funds for the Billion Oyster Project. A clean and vibrant harbor makes New York safer and more resilient, drives cultural engagement and economic development, and provides numerous recreational opportunities for its citizens. Building upon the work of the island's existing community of environmental educators, researchers, and artists, an expansion of climate-focused initiatives will benefit not only Governor's Island, but the city as the whole. We're excited about the island's future and encourage you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Pinkus? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker is Gabriel Florence.
Hello, can you hear me?
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Florence, and I'm founding artistic director of a place called Pioneer Works located in Rettit, Brooklyn. We work across music, art, science, and technology to, you know, build community through various creative disciplines focused around kind of largely arts and sciences, the idea that kind of we've built community through culture and kind of an elemental part of our, our mission is that we're free and accessible to all, and that it's a really kind of grassroots organization in terms of put the neighborhood first, even though we always try to tackle and think about large kind of global issues, global talk topics, and largely to global contemporary culture. We have really cherished our most, kind of last few years, having a partnership with Governor's Islands through working with LMCC, where we're setting up an exhibition, an art exhibition, talking with themes about criminal justice and doing a series of programs around those themes on the island. But we've also had this house in Nolan Park where we've set up a writer's residency, as well as doing kind of research-based projects, including kind of Josh Jolly Shapiro has been there doing a book about land names and kind of thinking about the history of New York land names, which is about to be published soon. And I think that to, to everybody here, I'm just completely in awe at the history of this island, the potential of what it can be really in New York as a space of, of research and kind of time to reflect on what's happening in the city. I, like many in this room, probably were in Sandy, swam in the waters, and felt, you know, neighborhood really respond to that and think about that as the, the future of, of what the city is, is gonna, gonna go to. And the idea of, of public engagement and building culture around popularizing these themes while it's being researched, I think it becomes this amazing kind of utopic idea of what Governor's Island could be, when really thinking about education and making this a public space and a public destination, which is a part of this, this proposal. And I think to hear everybody's concerns about the idea of what happened at Hudson Yards and the idea of that kind of being a part of this, for me, was, it would be the opposite of why I would ever be attracted to this, this proposal. I think that this is kind of the opposite and seems really well-intentioned with working with, with institutions and making sure that the nonprofits in their various missions kind of accumulate to this overall mission of what Governor's Island could be. And I think that I feel very, very good about the partners that I've spoken to and the intentions of the trust and very optimistic that they're getting the right people and getting the right, the idea that sustainability needs to be a part of the development in every way.
Thank you, Mr. Florence.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Marissa D'Amonecchi.
Good morning, New York City.
Good morning.
Nurse, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Marissa D'Amonecchi, and I'm the Executive Director of New York, Earth Matter New York. We're a nonprofit organization that was born on Governor's Island 12 years ago. Two years of seasonal programming, Governor's Island became our year-round base of operations in 2012, and we are located in the Eastern Development Zone. Our mission is to reduce the organic waste misdirected to landfills. We provide learning experiences and encourage New York City residents and businesses to be leaders in changing the way we view and we experience waste. Our goal is that everyone review and reimagine their food scraps and horticultural materials, leaves, trees, and yard debris as resources rather than waste. Composting and compost use is one of the basic fundamental ways that each one of us can personally reduce the greenhouse gas emissions and sequester carbon as part of the solution to climate change on our planet. We fell in love with the island because we see the island as a perfect outdoor classroom and testing ground to explore the many ways we can all help create a closed-loop model of zero-waste practices and support a healthy circular economy. We have been working with the trust and Guy Peck before that in developing and evolving the compost learning center, our New York State DEC-registered compost facility, as well as Soil Start Farm and the Lavender Field. We create a rich soil amendment that nurtures the island landscape and grows nutritious food for education, donation, as well as sale to island. Our food scraps come in year-round from residents who drop off at Manhattan and Brooklyn Farmers Market, and our finished compost goes to community groups, gardens, individuals, and of course, on the island. Commissioners, I request on behalf of Earth Matter New York that the rezoning includes explicit language in the comprehensive list of uses allowed by the proposed rezoning to ensure that our community-scale composting and demonstration farm initiatives will be permitted as an island function in the future. We request this language either be incorporated as per Manhattan Gale Brewer's recommendation or include language that specifically references community-scale composting operations and agriculture as permissible uses in the proposed commercial district or by any means appropriate and available in this process. We look forward to continuing our collaborations with all of the GI partners in New York City residents, and we thank you for this opportunity to speak and your work on this proposal.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank you also for the composting service at the farmers markets, which I make use of every week. Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker will be Wendy Braar.
Hello, can you hear me?
Welcome.
Great. Thank you. I'm a 35-year resident and sustainable design professional. We live, we are in an unprecedented time, and it's the wrong time to build when campuses have moved online and empty office buildings abound in New York City. Like Gowanus, let's pause on rezoning.
I'm afraid that we've lost you.
Especially during the years when East River Park and the Esplanade, all the way south to the seaport are under construction, impacting 110,000 nearby Lower East Siders. To address climate change immediately, let's develop the projects and buildings already on Governor's Island to support regenerative culture, the circular economy, zero-waste composting and food, food security. Let's add to Earth Matters and other projects things like a bike-based public development lab for bicycles, a youth-focused water and swim center, an ecotourism hub, and cost-effective innovations like a street tree nursery that cultivates green jobs and stewardship skills as well of natives, as well as native plants that will benefit the whole city. Give this down-to-earth, community-engaged climate lab 10 to 15 years of support to blossom before embarking on major construction that will have a profound climate impact and cost the city hundreds of millions, especially when we have plenty of empty office space that could be used by a university. Please, please. Last bit of green is vital to wildlife, as it's also on the Atlantic Flyway beckoning birds to the five boroughs. It's a critical health need, really, to all New Yorkers, especially to low-income and vulnerable New Yorkers citywide, and in particular, to future generations. Please take their needs for nature into account and pause this untimely process in greenwashed, unneeded design. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Bruce Trigg.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bruce Trigg. I'm a retired public health physician. I live on the very overdeveloped west side of Manhattan in West Village. And I'm a private citizen, and I work with MAGIC. I am very concerned about the future of the island, and the commission is getting to experience the, the snow job that the trustees and their supporters have been putting on for this hearing process. I protest this entire rezoning happening during the worst epidemic, the worst public health and economic crisis in 100 years in New York. This entire process should be put on pause. It gives the appearance that this is being rushed through and taking advantage of a crisis. Many New Yorkers cannot participate in this process because they are not computer-savvy, they don't own computers, they don't have internet access. This is in violation of Americans with Disabilities Act. It's anti-democratic, and it is going to be thrown out by the courts. So this entire process should be put on hold. Governor's Island is an idyllic oasis. A million New Yorkers visited in 2019 before COVID, a million people. These are working-class New Yorkers who do not have a place to escape in the Hamptons or the Adirondacks like wealthier New Yorkers, and their voices are not being heard at any of the hearings that I've attended. In fact, Community Board One held its main hearing on the night before the presidential election, not exactly a situation to encourage public participation. So this whole process has been opaque, and as I said, is anti-democratic. But this island is, is an oasis, and New Yorkers need a place for physical and mental health, solitude, and, and enjoyment, and a peaceful environment during this crisis, and will need it for a long time in the future. 20 and 30-story buildings and privatizing our public park in the interest of private developers is not in the interest of the million New Yorkers who, who have visited the island. The trustees and the friends of the trustees, and the trustees are appointed by the mayor and the, and the borough president, are overwhelmingly developers, real estate brokers, investors, entrepreneurs. There is not a single naturalist. There is not a single environmentalist, climate change specialist on either of those bodies. This is a Wall Street grab.
Thank you, Mr. Trigg.
Thank you so much.
Questions? Again, thank you, Dr. Trigg. Our next speaker will be Ally Ryan.
Ms., Ms. Brian, press star six. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Hello, my name is Ally Ryan, and I helped create Metro Area Governor's Island Coalition, which is also known as MAGIC, with Roger Manning and Bruce Trigg and, and others this past fall to oppose the Governor's Island rezoning plan and propose climate change center. I'd like to request that the City Planning Commission seriously consider voting against this Governor's Island rezoning plan and that the Governor's Island, Southern Island, be developed into a park and that the empty historic buildings be developed for active use as opposed to building a new educational slash office park. Please create a voter referendum to establish and protect Governor's Island, Southern Island as a park. In addition to what my friends have shared, I like to share on a personal note, my husband and I got married on Governor's Island on Talk Like a Pirate Day in 2010. We got married at Governor's Island's picnic point, which is a public space that is open to the public, which enabled my husband and I to afford and have a New York City wedding. I hope future newlyweds, as well as others, can continue to have gatherings on Governor's Island. In addition, as an East Village resident and parent, I'm aware that the East Side Coastal Resiliency Project, which the City Planning Committee, Commission passed in 2019, and I actually brought my daughters to the, the meet, the public hearing at that time, which okayed demolition of East River Park to be raised eight to 10 feet to make East River Park a flood wall as opposed, as opposed to a flood plain. We're losing 60% access to an almost 60-acre park over the course of five years, and the 60% access is changing every, is supposed to change every year, as you are probably aware. The Trust for Governor's Island's November 2nd CB1 presentation showed that the Governor's Island rezoning plans, two kidney-shaped development sites are set in flood plains. It has been said that the architecture would negate the flood plain, which makes me wonder if these building sites will be raised eight to 10 feet, so the Grand Esplanade may be walled in on the interior side of the island. And that the Trust for Governor's Island's November 9th presentation predicts construction on the proposed plan for nine years. If this plan is passed, this means that Lower Manhattan residents will lose two major parks starting this year for five years. And while we are all actively striving to survive the pandemic and the threat of lockdown anytime by the mayor, losing outdoor public space and athletic amenities seems wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Questions? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Gerald Forsberg.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Largo and Vice Chair Knuckles and Honorable Commissioners of the Planning Commission. As a resident in the Lower Manhattan, I am writing to voice my strong concern and opposition to the development plan being proposed by the Governor's Island Corporation on the grounds that, as currently proposed, the upzoning to permit 4.5 million, 4 million, or even 3.5 million, as was stated in other meetings, of new development with heights exceeding 30 stories will threaten the health, safety, and welfare of the public of New York and its visitors by eliminating open space, constructing and recorded and known flood plains, creating shadows on existing historic buildings, and ultimately diminishing the quality of life. As a matter of clarification of language, the South Island is a misnomer. There is one island, the northern portion of the, which is native to the harbor, with the southern portion of the island being landfill from the subway system. And that, excuse me, another matter of concern is that, given the ongoing nature of the pandemic and citywide closures, access to research materials such as those of the history of the development of the island, including the Robert Moses Papers, which can only be reviewed on-site through the New York City Public Library, are not accessible to the public. This means that any public involvement in what is to be a democratic process has been greatly hampered, and research to present arguments based in historic facts are unable to be formed. To the point of this public hearing, the proposed actions are quite simply a betrayal of the principles and concepts proclaimed by the goals of the community as expressed in the Special Governor's Island District. In addition to the conditions put forth by the Community Board, I propose an additional condition, which is to restrict and lessen the Eastern Development Zone to mirror the size of the Western Development Zone and to re-force the remaining southern portion of the Eastern Zone to promote ecological biodiversity conducive to supporting the designation of the island as a wildlife preserve consistent with tax exemptions and grant funding the corporation has received via its IRS designation as a federal wildlife preservation and protection. In conclusion, the proposed actions are not necessary to fulfill, will detract from the goals of the Special Governor's Island District. As we all know, this unique environmental heart of the harbor is once gone to overdevelopment. There will be no getting it back. The island can, can, and will always be a competitive component to the rich New York City landscape and must not be privatized, but remain a public recreational asset in the heart of the harbor. I will submit further testimony and writing, and I urge you to deny the proposed actions. Thank you for hearing my voice on this.
Thank you, Mr. Forsberg. Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Imus.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Karen Imus, Vice President of Programs at Waterfront Alliance. The water's edge of Governor's Island represents untapped potential while at the same time remains a landscape where the power of climate risk is undeniable. Waterfront Alliance is in support of the zoning proposal. We believe that this vision, with certain additional recommendations, is critical to advance the mission of the island to be an extraordinary public place to support expanded year-round public access and to create a path towards financial self-sufficiency. Like any world-class park or destination in New York, Governor's Island should be open 365 days a year. COVID-19 has underscored the need for more quality and affordable open space and programming, and Governor's Island is a key part of that conversation. Alongside open space, the proposed Climate Center has the potential to create a new innovation cluster for New York by bringing parties together to encourage technological research in the climate ocean and maritime fields. I'd like to touch on a few items that merit further examination. With both development zones and the 100-year flood plain and facing sea level rise conditions of up to 58, I'm sorry, facing sea level rise conditions of up to six feet by 2100, resiliency is a key consideration. In the trust presentations, the designed flood elevation varies between 13 and 15 feet above the base flood elevation. We would want to see elevation strategies of up to 17 and 18 feet. We believe a more thorough strategy should be presented on how the Climate Center and potential dormitories can survive future storms. And additionally, we encourage the trust to work with DCP to adjust all planned development in compliance with potential new zoning for coastal flood resiliency requirements. We also strongly encourage the project team to work with Waterfront Alliance through our rating systems, the Waterfront Edge Design Guidelines, to meet a commitment to resilience, public access, and innovation at the water's edge, which has been endorsed by Manhattan CB1 in an adopted resolution. With respect to the design for the perimeter around the South Island, except for restricted access by advanced request at Pier 101, there are no opportunities for visitors to touch the water at any point in Governor's Island shoreline. And we encourage the trust to allow proposals to include water-based components such as a get-down and recognize the benefits of these water-based connections in evaluation of RFP proposals. We also encourage greater use of natural shorelines in the design, which have multiple benefits. And we recommend revisiting the Waterfront Alliance's Maritime Activation Plan for Governor's Island for a list of recommended water access opportunities, including human-powered boating, a marina, and a boat lift. With respect to ferry access, as the island works towards full-year operation, ferry service will need to be expanded and refined. RFP respondents should understand current ferry capacity and future possibilities. We strongly encourage greater integration of Governor's Island into the New York City ferry system so that the island is truly accessible to all five boroughs. And finally, we recommend reconstructing Lima Pier for use as a designated service entrance to the island, such as receiving trucks and freight and discharging trash. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Walker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Lago. My name is Emily Walker, and I am the Director of Outreach and Programs at New Yorkers for Parks. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to submit testimony on the Governor's Island text amendment being considered today. NY4P testifies in support of this proposed action. With a mission to be self-sustaining for the long term, the proposed text amendment will help allow for the development needed to ensure that Governor's Island can become a year-round destination and remain a vital open space asset for New Yorkers for years to come. We are particularly pleased to note that the rezoning would bring 8.85 acres of additional open space to Governor's Island, bringing the total acreage of public open space to 54.85 acres. Given the challenges in identifying land for new open space development throughout the city, as well as funding that open space, this is a welcome opportunity to provide more public space for New Yorkers to enjoy. Additionally, the proposed rezoning would help Governor's Island become a year-round destination, and we think this would allow for more robust and regular utilization of the island. This goal has become all the more critical in light of the COVID crisis and the need for New Yorkers to have ample access to parks and open space as safe spaces to gather, recreate, and seek respite during this challenging time. We expect this rezoning to bring a reliable funding stream to provide for the maintenance and operations of Governor's Island and its open spaces, as well as vital investments in the transportation infrastructure that allows for ongoing and increased public use and access to the island. We encourage the Trust for Governor's Island to remain committed to free transportation for NHTC residents, as well as low-income New Yorkers. And our hope is that this rezoning can be a way to secure the funding to ensure that all New Yorkers, regardless of zip code or income, can have access to Governor's Island year-round. Additionally, we encourage the Trust for Governor's Island to take into serious consideration any feedback from the public process to ensure that the development this rezoning will bring will be approached in a thoughtful manner and one that is appropriately scaled to the island as well as its open spaces. We believe the development of the buildings of this rezoning should not bring a negative impact to the existing open space or any new open space that will be created. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Gilman.
Hello, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Timothy Gilman. I am Executive Director of Ready Center, a nonprofit focused on climate adaptation. Our mission is to develop environmental education, workforce training, and job creation with a particular focus on the waterfront industry and the low-income communities that occupy these areas. We were created in response to the devastation of Superstorm Sandy, both in our home neighborhood of Red Hook and in the city as a whole. We'd like to assert this is a city we are in dire need of major changes to the physical makeup and the mindset of the city in regard to the changing climate. We have already begun to work with Governor's Island on projects that will advance water quality improvement, educational opportunities for public school students, and work opportunities. They are in keeping with the vision we hope to see realized with the new Climate Center on the island. Perhaps more than any other neighborhood, Red Hook is neighbor to Governor's Island. As such, development there will probably have more impact on us than any other community. To aid our mission as a nonprofit, we call for the fast-tracking of sustainable green industry and climate adaptation measures. Development plans must be community-responsive and sustainable, but keeping them moving is essential to meeting the escalating needs of our vulnerable position as a city and the nation's largest harbor. Red Hook has rejected many large-scale developments in our neighborhood, but the priorities and motivations of those plans were suspect at best. We support, and when possible, participate in development projects that demonstrate and model innovative climate adaptation, environmental justice, job training and creation for the disenfranchised, ecological restoration, particularly in waterfront areas, the softening of hard infrastructure, and increasing the public's physical access to the water for recreation, education, and research. All of the plans put forward reflect those critical elements to the future of our city. As a neighborhood, we have resisted large-scale development that doesn't take community wishes, needs, and input into account. New York City must be a national and global model for preemptive, sustainable development. However, many of the large-scale projects that would have offered the city greater protections have been halted or stopped due to objections that did not prioritize job creation. A climate center that demonstrates those principles must become a new anchor to the city's economy and geography. As a small nonprofit, we have felt a very open and warm welcome into the future plans of the island, have not felt that the leadership will do anything to decrease the public enjoyment of the space, quite to the contrary. While recreation is extremely valuable to the city's mental and physical health, equity-focused green development cannot be excluded. We call for very strong and clear language stating that the development of the island will ensure major employment benefits for the low-income community and net positive impact on the natural environment as a priority in the project. Governor's Island is an amazing recreational area. There's an urgent need and opportunity before us to develop it as an equally amazing resource for the next phase of industrial development, clean technology that puts the environment as a top priority. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Gilman? Thank you. Our next speaker is Janie Bavishi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Janie Bavishi, and I serve as the Director of the Mayor's Office of Resiliency. My office is responsible for ensuring that New York City and its residents are ready to withstand and emerge stronger from the multiple impacts of climate change now and into the future. I am appearing here today to testify in support of the proposed rezoning of Governor's Island, which would enable the creation of a new Center for Climate Solutions on the island's southern half. As you likely know, New York City is already a global leader when it comes to climate change adaptation. In the eight years since Hurricane Sandy, we have invested more than $20 billion to make our city stronger and more resilient to flooding and extreme heat. These investments include multiple coastal infrastructure projects with budgets in the hundreds of millions, as well as countless other efforts, spanning from restoring wetlands to painting millions of square feet of rooftops with reflective white coatings to combat urban heat island effect. With this rezoning, we have a rare and unique opportunity to build on New York City's considerable expertise in climate resiliency and position ourselves at the vanguard of a new and rapidly growing industry. As hurricanes, wildfires, floods, and droughts become more common and more severe, the importance of cutting-edge climate science, resilient design, and thoughtful environmental policy will only increase. Just as Detroit made a name for itself on cars, it's time for us to lead the way with innovative solutions on climate adaptation. This proposal is projected to create 8,000 direct new jobs and $1 billion in economic impact in New York City. It will also help make Governor's Island accessible to the public year-round and will create valuable new spaces for nonprofits and community groups to convene conversations, conduct outreach, and research, and help educate New Yorkers about the climate threats we face and the steps being taken to address them. I often say that resiliency is a process, not an outcome. As long as the world remains addicted to fossil fuels, we will have to continually find new ways to manage growing threats. We are still very much in the early stages of reimagining how cities must change to withstand more climate disasters. The challenges we face are urgent. Addressing them will require creativity, innovation, and collaboration. Moving ahead with this rezoning is one vitally important step toward developing the solutions we need to create a safer and more prosperous future for New York City.
Thank you, Ms. Bavishi. Commissioner Levin.
Yes, Ms. Bavishi, I have a question about the, how the city will be working with the trust through the RFP process and the effort to secure particularly the anchor tenant, but other users here. Will the city be participating in that effort? Will there be capital, city capital funds made available to, as part of the RFP? That's something we saw in the Cornell Tech proposal. I wonder how the city will be working to attract the best possible tenants here.
I'm not the right person to speak to the budget process, but in terms of selecting the anchor tenant, we're absolutely going to partner with the Trust for Governor's Island on that and certainly willing to contribute our expertise in this issue area as we navigate that process.
Okay. Well, I guess, so I'd ask you, or maybe just to the trust, a question as we get into the follow-up part of this consideration. A little better understanding of the resources the city is going to provide, or the trust is going to, well, the trust doesn't have the resources. That's the, that's the whole point here. How are we going to make this a compelling bidding opportunity for the anchor tenants we're seeking to attract? I imagine it's going to be more than just land we have to give people.
We'll include that in the materials that we bring to post-haring follow-up. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Ms. Bavishi. Our next speaker is Sabrina Lindsay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Lago members of the Commission. My name is Sabrina Lindsay. I've been a member of 32BJ for three years. The pandemic has pushed our city to its breaking point with unemployment high and rents continuing to rise. The math no longer works for so many people in the city. I recently moved to Community District One. I'm a native New Yorker, and these issues could not be more obvious with so many of our neighbors out of work because of the pandemic. I worry that the employment prices will only worsen. The Trust for Governor's Island and the city has asked to rezone the South Island section to allow for the development and center of climate solution for the study of climate change. The rezoning will unlock up to 4.2 million square space and create over 8,000 jobs. As you know, 32BJ is the largest property service union representing 85,000 property service workers across the city. We will make, we maintain and provide service, excuse me, security service in buildings, the only to discuss the Governor's Island and develop the size with permanently staffed by almost 120 commercial cleaners and over 50 security workers, officers. We are pleased that the trust made early commitments to establishing prevailing job wage, jobs, excuse me, proposed projects will provide permanent income and will give opportunity upwards mobility, security, and dignity to working-class families. This is also an opportunity to support climate justice and a city will creating 1 billion economic impact. 32BJ supports responsibility developers who will invest in the city. 32BJ has members of, who live and work in the Community District One. We know this development on Governor's Island will continue to uphold the industry as standard to provide opportunities for working families to thrive in New York City. On behalf of 32BJ, I respectfully urge to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Lindsay? Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirsten Teodos.
That speaker does not appear to be in the room.
Okay, then our speaker will be Alex Herrera.
Hello, this is Alex Herrera.
Welcome.
I hope you, I hope you can hear me good. I'm speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy about the, about the proposal at hand. The Conservancy opposes the proposed zoning change that would allow up to 4.3 million square feet of new building bulk on sites that are just south of the Governor's Island Historic District. The massing and height of the new buildings, as illustrated- The massing and height of the new buildings, as illustrated in a presentation commissioned by the Trust for Governor's Island, have no relation to the unique history and sense of place of Governor's Island. And we also question how such large buildings can be sustained on a small island at sea level with limited infrastructure and with only ferry connections to the rest of the city. We are, we are very familiar with Roosevelt Island, another one of our longstanding projects. And of course Roosevelt Island is a transportation hub compared to Governor's Island. They have a subway, they have a bridge, they have a tram and they have ferries. Governor's Island only has ferries. The Conservancy is not opposed to new buildings on the South Side, but the proposed zoning change would allow an excess of bulk and density. New buildings up to 30 stories in height are envisioned, which are out of scale with the existing buildings on the island. As you mentioned, a 30 story building would be taller than the Statue of Liberty. We find that the proposed scheme is driven largely by consideration of the financial return of the sites, with little thought given to special historic character or physical beauty of the island, which welcomes over a million visitors a year. This is public land and other important considerations apart from financial return must be considered. The New York Landmarks Conservancy has a long history of involvement with Governor's Island. For decades, we have worked with the trust and its predecessor organization to push for the preservation of the historic buildings on the island. So far, a good deal of attention and work has gone into keeping the buildings up. The trust has our thanks for this. Many of the historic buildings, including Liggett Hall, with its very spacious interior, remain empty. Surely new uses deserve to be found for these existing buildings before millions of square feet of new construction is approved. In conclusion, the Landmarks Conservancy believes very strongly that Governor's Island is a valuable public amenity for all New Yorkers and that its future development needs to be harmonious with the special physical and visual characteristics that define the island and that attract millions of visitors. The proposed rezoning would permit out of context development and should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Herrera. Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Tricia Joyce.
Hello, I'm Tricia Joyce, parent, parent leader and 30 year resident of Lower Manhattan. Full disclosure, I am also on Community Board One as the Youth of the Chair or the Chair of the Youth and Education Committee, though I am not speaking on their behalf today. I say that to give you my perspective with my testimony. Being a 30 year resident here, I, the neighborhood I live in doesn't even remotely resemble the one I moved to largely for the better. I have lived through the development of Lower Manhattan. We have more than doubled our population over that time and had some wonderful, beautifully well done developments that we now enjoy every single day. I also am a huge fan of the gem we know as Governor's Island. And as I reflect on this RFP, I have to remember others that came before it that weren't done as well. I think whenever we talk about community amenities in the context of commercial development, we have to be very careful. It's a very slippery slope. We haven't even talked about the effects of sun on the island, at least that I've heard with this development. And looking at things through the lens of our children, I will always notice the outcroppings of decisions made in haste. And so while I am not against development on the island, I would say that this is very similar to those that I've experienced over this time that have been, been done too hastily, been done without considering the things that came before them, most importantly, the Harbor School, which, you know, I do want to say was the first to come to this island. And with the promise of a pool, because the pool is necessary for them to receive the certificate for graduation. And this many years later, after proving themselves, they still don't have this pool. And I think when it comes to any sort of development, we have to do first things first. And to me, we have to make this school whole first. And we've already cited 515 as being the ideal place for this school and I feel concern about conversations about development charging forward without taking care of the people who were here at the beginning. We have an opportunity on Governor's Island to not have to pit all the stakeholders against each other. We need all the things that have been discussed today in terms of climate change and recreation space. But let's be careful as we go to find an appropriate RFP for this island to not fall into that same trap we have so many times along the way.
Thank you, Ms.
Thanks very much.
Questions? Again, thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Sears.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great. Blazing Saddles is grateful to have been able to operate our green business, providing recreational opportunities to thousands of Governor's Island's visitors over the last seven years. We employ mostly students who are local residents, many of them in their first jobs where they learn skills they take with them in their future personal and professional lives. For you that have not visited Governor's Island, please come out and experience for yourselves the unique and beautiful public open space and envision how the underutilized areas could benefit the public in the future. Please support the proposed plan rezoning the South Island for new green development and allow the public additional year round recreational opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Sears. Thank you. Our next speaker is Miranda Massey.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Welcome.
Thank you so much. And thank you Commissioners for creating this space for public testimony and for the work that you do. I am the Director of the Climate Museum. We started publicly programming three years ago. And through that entire time, we have presented public programs in a range of places around New York City, but in particular on Governor's Island. And in partnership with the trust, some of the programs we've done on the island have included a couple of exhibitions, a couple of public art installations and an Ask a Scientist Day where a NASA scientist spent the whole day fielding questions from the public about the science of climate change and what people could do to address it, to move us forward in an increasingly uncertain future where the odds tend to be blunt toward cataclysm. I want to emphasize that the trust's support for the Climate Museum has been absolutely essential to our ability to present these programs. And it was offered for free with huge energy and sincerity before this proposal was a twinkle in anybody's eye. The claims about snow jobs and greenwashing ring very false to those of us who work on climate and at the intersection of climate culture and public engagement with the trust, which has exhibited nothing but genuineness and authenticity in the force of its commitment to those goals. I think the main point that I'd like to make today is that there seems to be a bit of a business as usual approach undergirding a lot of the objections to this proposal. We face not only an accelerating physical climate crisis, but despite the emerging promise of government action, a crisis in public engagement that will be necessary to drive the progress we need to avoid the worst climate impacts. This is an unparalleled and singular opportunity to express the social priority of climate engagement. We need to do that now. These opportunities don't happen all the time and we are on extraordinarily tight clock. That clock is ticking down and we strongly urge the Commission to approve this proposal, which rightly places New York City at the center of global climate leadership and places the climate crisis at the center of what the public should be thinking about and directing its attention and resources to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Massey? Thank you. Our next speaker is Merritt Burnbaum.
Thank you. I'm Merritt Burnbaum. I'm the Executive Director of the Friends of Governor's Island. We're an independent nonprofit whose primary goal is to support expanded public access to and increased enjoyment of this extraordinary place. We're in favor of the proposed rezoning, not only out of concern for the island's long term future, but because we believe the proposal has been crafted in the public interest and is in keeping with our original vision for responsible mixed use development focused on public benefit. Right now, as we speak, Governor's Island is covered in a blanket of slush free snow. Its 120 acres of open space are pristine and it begs for sledding, cross country skiing, fort building and nature walks. But as we know, there is no one there right now to enjoy those activities. More than a million square feet of the historic buildings are uninhabitable and two desolate parcels of land on either side of the park, the two that we're here to talk about are fenced off and filled with abandoned warehouses. In a city starved for space, this is a tragedy. The reason that the island is empty right now is because Governor's Island is much more than a park and much more than a historic district. As the owner and operator of an island that's disconnected from the network of the city services, the trust is wholly responsible for running, among other things, public transportation network, a public utility system, public marine infrastructure, public facilities maintenance and public parkland. Access to the park and the other amenities on Governor's Island is not possible without all of the above mentioned services and those services are not possible without significant revenue. The Friends is responsible for raising private funds to help care for the island and we know firsthand that philanthropy cannot fill the enormous gap. While other parks raise the majority of their funding from people who live within two blocks of the park, Governor's Island is not actually adjacent to any specific neighborhood, making the fundraising burden uniquely challenging. Currently, as we know, the trust budget is only allowing the island to be open six months out of the year. And with COVID bringing the city coffers to the breaking point, a sustainable funding mechanism is necessary to expand, improve and enhance the park space on the island, including the field space, public programming and visitor amenities, and most especially increased ferry access. Governor's Island should be accessible to every New Yorker year round. Its historic buildings should be readapted and its carefully designated development parcels should be responsibly developed to benefit the public. The proposed rezoning makes all of these priorities possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Burnbaum? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker is Catherine Heinz.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Heinz, Executive Director of New York City Audubon, a grassroots urban conservation organization representing 10,000 members and followers in the city of New York. I'm honored to serve on the trust's Community Advisory Council since 2016. We have operated a summer house in Nolan Park since 2017, albeit without plumbing. Our interest is more than cultural. New York City Audubon is monitor of nesting common turns on the island's piers since 2013 and our volunteers have collected bird census and breeding data since 2008. Some 217 bird species have been reported so far on Governor's Island. It's a bona fide birding hotspot and more important, it's a foraging nesting and stopover habitat for thousands of North American migratory birds. Growing and nurturing a thriving Governor's Island is a matter of task. The proposal before the Commission is the result of 20 years of careful planning. As a longtime partner and follower of the trust progress, we have tremendous enthusiasm for the climate solutions theme. Global warming threatens nearly all North American bird species. We are also confident in the integrity of the trust leadership. From Leslie to Michael to Claire, we've found proven partners in conservation and habitat creation who share a desire for green environmentally embracing urban space that is good for birds and people. This vision has led to Hammock Grove, the hills, the grassy play lawn, the restoration of the parade ground, all of which include native trees, shrubs, tender plantings and even bird nest boxes. It's a built and reclaimed bird paradise. We agree with many comments expressed today, some for some against. New York City Audubon does not oppose sustainable development within the development zones that were established in the 2010 master plan. However, we have several conditions. We ask that any buildings above 75 feet incorporate bird friendly design as required by local law 15 for their full height. We ask that all buildings be designed with habitat quality green roofs and we yearn for design that offers interconnecting intensive green roofs where larger spaces are part of the park and accessible to the public from ground level. Imagine in your mind's eye, buildings that appear to be under hills or rolling hills. We ask that the development zones include habitat quality landscape architecture with wetlands, grasslands, trees and shorelines that provide ecosystem services to wildlife. We also have concerns about height and artificial light. We see no benefit to high rise buildings on Governor's Island. Our concerns include shadow density, loss of pastoral character. We'd like to see most buildings limited to four to six stories or 75 feet. We absolutely oppose the installation of artificial turf fields and stadium style lighting. And we oppose building illumination that would want any and would want any lighting plan to follow dark skies lighting standards. That is, they reduce sky glow, minimize glare and blue light in the nighttime environment. Thank you for your time and for hearing New York City Audubon's requests and concerns on behalf of birds and birders who eagerly await year round affordable welcoming access to Governor's Island.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Questions? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Daniel Vassini.
Mr. Vassini is no longer in the room.
Okay, then Robert Pirani.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, well, thank you Chair Lago and fellow Commissioners. My name is Rob Pirani. I'm the founding Executive Director of the Governor's Island, and a current board member of its successor organization, the Friends of Governor's Island. My testimony today in favor of the proposed rezoning is based on more than 25 years of experience advocating for and planning this beloved resource in New York Harbor. Thanks to many, many efforts, public and private, the island today is home to an extraordinary park and it's enjoyed by hundreds of thousands of visitors each summer. But it's really only a partial fulfillment of the vision for its future that we crafted more than two decades ago. From our first planning charrettes and thousands of public, hundreds of public hearings and meetings, the shared vision for the island has always included new mixed use development in the service of public use and public benefit. Even in its early days, our planning and financial models show that new development is not only desirable but necessary to ensure a year round visitation and a dedicated revenue stream critical for the island's open space and historic structures and in support of its infrastructure and public transportation services. I'll note that there's been many, many RFPs for the North Island Building since 2006, but they have yielded very few viable proposals and the historic structures are falling into greater disrepair each year. Given the island's current lack of adequate year round amenities, infrastructure and transportation, the inability to find tenants for the historic district is not surprising. Making space available for new construction within the narrowly defined development parcels on the South Island will help solve the island's chicken and egg infrastructure problems. I'll note that the Friends Board is now taking a position on the scale of development to be permitted under the rezoning. We believe the scale should be determined by understanding what will attract the needed investment to support public access and enjoyment while also taking into account community interest and impacts on the public user experience. And I'll note there's been a lot of thoughtful testimony in that regard this morning, both pro and con the rezoning. But whatever the scale, our goal is to ensure that the rezoning betters the park and the historic character of the island, including design and circulation that reinforces the island's current campus like atmosphere. We are also very supportive of the proposed creation of the open space sub area that will ensure the long term preservation and recreational open space on the South Island. And we want, agree that careful attention must be paid to the number and scale of the primary and secondary connections and view quarters that run through the development zone and connect the esplanade to the park. Above all, we're very supportive of the approach that the trust has taken to the manage the development process in its entirety rather than outsource development to a single master developer. We, this approach leaves room for thoughtful and a gradual strategy with opportunity for diverse tendencies and public input throughout the process. Thank you again.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Pirani? Thank you. Our next speaker will be Adrian Guz. Our next speaker will be Adrian Guz.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to share. My name is Adrian Guz. I'm founder-principal of West Side Landscape Architecture in New York, and I was part, we were part of the long planning history for the master plan of Governors Island from the start. We participated in a design team for this wonderful park on the South Side with the two reservations for developing sites for appropriate uses. Park and developing sites, they have a beautiful interface with winding, green-edged boulevard, and the developing sites are also facing the uninterrupted water's edge promenade. We are very enthusiastic with the climate center vision. It follows the ethos of the park, and it will support the ferries that will make the park much more accessible. I thank you for listening, and we support this proposal.
Thank you for your comments. Questions from Mr. Guz? Commissioner Levin?
Mr. Guz, thank you for being here, and thank you for the tremendous work that you and your colleagues have done on the island. I think the public open space that's been achieved, the plan you laid out, you know, sort of bring us to the point today where we have, you know, much better understanding of what quality open space could be, and we've now got people speaking up in defense of what is already there rather than trying to imagine an undefined future. I have a question for you about the, we've heard a lot of discussion about the proposed scale of these buildings. Does the scale we're looking at, what wisdom do you have for us from the perspective of the open space with regard to the scale of these buildings? Are these buildings going to fit well into the open space environment you've created?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Levin. For the park, there is no doubt, many quality parks have amazing institutions next door or even within the park. And the issue which is very relevant in the decision-making process is the development of an interface, a human-scale interface with trees, where, let's say, the institute and the park are in exchange. There is a relationship. And that is the most relevant criteria for, let's say, developing this plan.
Could I ask you one more question about scale? And that is the notion of locating the largest buildings on the northern end of the southern side. I understand the idea of very large scale next to Yankee Pier. But does a development site on the western edge of the island present any different urban design considerations?
Again, I think it is very relevant that the adjacency of a park needs a human scale. So the foot of any development, the foot of buildings, they need to be designed in the right proportion. If they have a setback and they are higher for the park, that is not a relevant issue. We, from Park World, we benefit from people who work and enjoy the park where there's eyes on the park from the adjacencies, and the human scale is there. That is the most relevant thing I would suggest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Nan Richardson.
Good morning. I'm Nan Richardson, and I'm Chair of the PTA School Advocacy Committee of the New York Harbor School. And I'm here this morning to ask you to imagine. Imagine the Guardia without a single stage. Imagine Stuyvesant without a lab. And now imagine Harbor School without a pool. We know what's wrong with the picture, and if you could see the school in action, you would immediately know too. We have almost 600 students on the water, in the water, every day as the core of their marine curriculum. Yet we have to go to Bushwick four times a week to be able to train. We're preparing these 70% minority students who come from every borough in New York, and who study vessel operations and aquaculture and marine systems technology and ocean engineering and marine biology or marine policy for employment on the waterfront, millions of dollars of jobs, and all New Yorkers only hold 14% of them. And through marine sciences in college, we're equipping them to face the climate change challenges of the future of a city on water, 1,000 square miles of water. So a proposed climate change center overlooks the fact that we've been a climate change environmental school since the island began, its first tenant starting in 2010. And did you all know that the BOP was in fact born out of the Harbor School? Its director was a teacher there. We have MOUs with more than six universities, including Cunys and Sunys, and we could move Harbor to a nine-to-14 model to become the Climate Change Solution Center. We work closely with Earth Matter, who advises the school's robust composting program, and with our farm neighbor Grow to Learn. This is a symbiotic ecosystem that follows the laws of nature. It needs to grow or die. Now Harbor was promised facilities when we moved there in 2010, but 11 years later, we still don't have a gym, an auditorium, a library, and this is like missing a major organ, an aquatic training center. We're overcrowded. Our applications and demand for the school are soaring. We could double in size if we had the space to do so, but we do not. This is short-sighted for the city, because this is education as a jobs driver for New York. As it is, we have to import Seattle Ferry Systems because we can't fill those jobs, but Harbor students could. We have to import lifeguards from Eastern Europe to man the beaches and pools, jobs Harbor kids could take. We need to import divers from the Gulf to work on a rotting waterfront infrastructure, Harbor again. Marine science is comparatively new. We're on the cutting edge of this. We need to grow not for this school alone, but for all of New York. In so doing, we would open up these lucrative opportunities for minority students, which are woefully unrepresented in them. As Tricia Joyce just mentioned, the SCA identified Building 515 after many trips to the island with the trust in the last three years to look at possible spaces. And we were told just two months ago, at the end of the year, it was on the table. But since then, we haven't heard anything. So we're asking the trust to accord this Building 515, with or without this ULP agreement, to finally fulfill this school's mission. And we're asking you at City Planning to consider this unique public school's future, because we will be there for at least 90 years more, as per our lease, and build on what we have and look for the solution here at home. We have the wind in the sails to right the ship, set its course.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. If you could submit the balance of your testimony, you would welcome receiving it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker is Bruce Monroe.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Bruce Monroe. I'm speaking for myself as a private citizen, but I must tell you about my experience with Governors Island as a longtime volunteer with what was initially the Governors Island Alliance, and is now the Friends of Governors Alliance, Friends of Governors Island. And I have had the unique experience for the last 10 years now of, through my volunteer work with them and the National Park Service, of engaging with the public and telling them about the island and doing walking tours of the island for the Friends, about the history of the island and the development of the island. So I've been engaging with the public over that, over these issues and informing them about the island for years. And the thing that strikes me most about all of the conversation here about future development is there's this tremendous focus on the size and the proportions of these new buildings in the development zones, which were part of the initial plan. And I think that's the wrong focus right now, because I think the focus right now should be mostly on accessibility, and all the people that object to the size and the scale of the building should really reconsider and put their focus on the future development in terms of how it develops. And the Climate Change Center will be, fits so well into the way the island is developing. And I'm very much supportive of it, but I would, you know, keep a great eye on what the, how these develop. And it's just been tremendous for me to see how the trust has followed their plan and developed it in surprising new ways. And I would support them in moving forward in doing this with this new plan wholeheartedly. And I look forward to seeing what occurs from it. And hopefully, you'll support them as they move forward and take in consideration all these objections, but move forward, because accessibility and year-round accessibility, I think, is the key to development of the island at its stage right now in its development. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Monroe? Again, thank you. Our next speaker is Alicia Glenn.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Alicia Glenn, and I am the Chair of the Trust for Governors Island. Governors Island is a world-class public space. It is literally the island at the center of the world. And after a mostly military and deeply private past, it is now a beautiful and public place. It rivals the great urban and waterfront green spaces around the globe. It is a center for education and a place where arts and culture thrive. But despite its uniqueness, the island is also truly underutilized, incomplete. And like many of us, maybe it hasn't reached its full potential. And to be honest, it is also on very, very shaky financial ground. And that is why, over the past year, the trust has taken a serious, serious look at how the island can continue to enhance and support its existing uses through promoting innovation and dialogue around what one of the most crucial issues facing all of us is: climate change and the need to develop technologies and materials that advance true sustainability. And let's face it, the need to truly disrupt the course our planet is on is only more important as COVID-19 has spread worldwide, underscoring the need for coordination and response on a global scale. The vision for a campus and living laboratory that brings together researchers, entrepreneurs, and advocates engaged in studying and mitigating the impacts of climate change speaks to the unique and special nature of the island. Like the plan to locate the UN in New York after World War II, this is an opportunity to reaffirm our city's commitment to being the place where innovation, progressive, and actual game-changing ideas and actions can and do happen. The zoning proposal represents a sustainable funding mechanism that will preserve and protect the island's park spaces, restore the 1.3 million square feet of historic buildings, improve the offerings for those great kids at the Harbor School, and allow the island to stay open year-round, something I think all of us New Yorkers can appreciate now more than ever. And it does limit new development to areas outlined in the island's master plan, long contemplated for future building, while also creating new open spaces and a widened esplanade. Coming out of the pandemic, this proposal will also position the island as a hub of economic recovery, creating more than $1 billion in economic impact and over 8,000 jobs and career training opportunities. Let's ensure that New Yorkers are getting back to work while we're taking on this critical issue. In short, this plan is essential to making the island accessible and viable. And by the way, our plan is the insurance that all of the quirkiness, funkiness, unique, and fundamentally, New York aspects of this island that we all love won't be going anywhere. Let's locate the first truly cross-disciplinary school of climate and sustainability in this amazing place, in our amazing city. Let's make it truly the green island at the center of the world, not just for this century, but for centuries to come.
Thank you. Good to hear from you again, Ms. Glenn. Questions? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Marcel Negret.
Marcel Negret, you can press star six to unmute your phone.
Hello.
There we go.
Hello. Sorry for the delay. Thank you for the chance to submit testimony. My name is Marcel Negret. I'm a senior planner at the Regional Plan Association. The RPA celebrates the important milestones achieved by the Governors Islands Trust, but we also recognize that there is much more work needed before completing the vision that was developed over a decade ago. As such, we're pleased to support the creation of the South Island Special District. Throughout the mid-'90s, we led and incubated the Governors Island Alliance, a coalition of more than 45 organizations dedicated to transforming the island. We organized workshops, panel discussions, and tours facilitating a process that ensured that the public interest determined the reuse of the island. This coalition recognized the need to identify uses that would generate revenue for operations and maintaining infrastructure in the service of public access and interest. Under this vision, revenue for maintenance would come directly in the form of leases or other payments from profit uses and hosting uses that generate enough visitor traffic to support the ferry service and concessions. The self-sustaining principle was a key argument that facilitated the transfer to local control. The city and federal administration needed certainty that the transfer could be done in a way that would not represent a permanent fiscal burden or that the property would not fall into neglect. Today, the island is a great place, but more work is needed to fulfill the vision and ensure it becomes a true year-round destination. Attaching the current zoning is warranted. Current allowable uses applicable to the south side of the island under the current, under the existing zoning only permit residential and limited community facility services. The currently allowed densities and use groups would not support the need at revenue-generating programs to maintain the island, nor are they aligned with the goal of securing an accurate educational institution. Consistent with the uses identified by the coalition decades ago, the proposed zoning would allow for a mix of academic, commercial, nonprofit, cultural, convening, and hospitality uses anchored by a climate research and educational center. While we understand the desire to designate specific urban design and use considerations applicable to the proposed development zones, an overly prescriptive set of rules might have the unintended consequence of impeding the type of research the center could perform when evaluating coastal resilience solutions. The new zoning should allow the research center to perform testing of construction techniques, evaluate structure typologies and materials to investigate their effectiveness in climate adaptation and coastal resilience. Similarly, the zoning framework shouldn't ensure that the type of activities associated with prototyping and laboratory work are allowed and listed in the permitted use groups. These types of uses would allow for synergies and partnerships through local manufacturing facilities to flourish, particularly those located along Brooklyn's waterfront and Sunset Park and in the Navy Yard. Our P looks forward to supporting the plan throughout the remainder of the review process. I will be submitting more detailed comments in writing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Negret? Thank you. Our next speaker is Diana Prado.
Looks like Tana Prado is no longer in the room. Oh, no, there she is. Hold on. There we go. Sorry.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the Trust for Governors Island's rezoning application for the Climate Solutions Center on the South Island. I am Tanya Prado, Chief of Staff of the Alliance of Downtown New York, which manages the Business Improvement District for Lower Manhattan, south of Chambers Street. In Lower Manhattan, we like to think of Governors Island as our unofficial backyard. It has always been an oasis in the harbor. So many of us have enjoyed spending time on the island. This past summer, it was even more essential, providing New Yorkers with a place to safely bike, walk, picnic, and just generally enjoy the outdoors, even in the pandemic. This proposal, we believe, will allow for uses within development sites on the South Island that were long envisioned as part of the master plan, following over 20 years of advocacy and community planning, which do not impact the island's existing park. It is our belief that the trust has crafted a zoning framework that respects the island's context and character while delivering on its mission to create a vibrant, sustainable, and better utilized Governors Island. As you all know, the island is only open six months per year. We can all agree that it should be open and accessible year-round. This plan will also enable the trust to expand public access to the island year-round, ensuring that a broader and a more diverse set of New Yorkers will be able to enjoy it. Thinking ahead, a climate solution center seems like a wise use of the space. We are in an unprecedented moment. The COVID-19 pandemic has had a grave effect on the city's economy. Unemployment is high. Many businesses are hanging on by a thread. And COVID-19 isn't the only crisis we face. Climate change is here. It's threatening Lower Manhattan, the city, the country, and the world. As you know well, we got our own taste of the effects of climate change when Superstorm Sandy breached our seawalls and flooded our streets, subways, and power plants. A climate solution center on the island would help address both of these crises and further the city's position as a global leader in climate science, innovation, education, and research. It is projected to bring the city 8,000 direct jobs and $1 billion in physical impact in New York, in addition to supporting the island's operations by generating a sustainable revenue to support the park, cultural activities, and expanded year-round access. This vision, we believe, is very much aligned with the existing character and ethos, represents an exciting opportunity to grow and expand what's already happening on the island. We believe this project will be an economic boon for the neighborhood and would put us squarely in the and would put us squarely in the fight against climate change. On behalf of the Downtown Alliance and our Board of Directors, we strongly support the Governors Island rezoning proposal before you today and urge you to vote in support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Prado? Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lily Chopra.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lily Chopra. I'm the Executive Director, Artistic Programs at the Lower Manhattan Cultural Council, LMCC. And as one of the first anchor tenants of Governors Island since the departure of the Coast Guard, LMCC is in favor and pleased to see an achievable proposal come together to provide the Trust for Governors Island with a forward-looking plan to become economically sustainable and thrive for the long term. The plan outlines a holistic vision centered on sustainability and equity. The Climate Solutions Center at the southern end of the island will create pipelines for equitable job and educational opportunities in the city, enabling the trust to expand the island's public parkland and build upon its existing framework of cultural and environmental programming. The plan provides opportunity for creating critical infrastructure to allow more diverse New Yorkers' access to an increasingly broad range of public opportunities and uses on Governors Island, including the art center. Perhaps most importantly, the proposal provides the trust with financial support to maintain the island as a year-round recreational, educational, cultural, and research destination for all New Yorkers. LMCC was among the inaugural partners to redefine the island as a cultural destination back in 2010, and it is a testament to the long-term vision of the trust that its first year-round tenants, including the Harbor School, a public school for maritime ecology, and an art center organization dedicated to connecting, serving, and making space for artists and local communities with programs focused on sustainability. We see the trust's future plan for building scientific research and public engagement on the southern end of the island as fully intertwined and aligned with the island's current mixed uses and focus on environmental stewardship. As we look to the post-pandemic future, we are optimistic that the trust's rezoning plan ensures Governors Island as a cultural treasure, allowing it to grow into a truly vibrant, sustainable, year-long community for and composed of all New Yorkers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Chopra? Thank you. Our next speaker will be Eli Devorkin.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Commissioners, for the opportunity to testify. My name is Eli Devorkin. I'm the Editorial and Policy Director at the Center for Urban Future, an independent think tank focused on creating a more inclusive economy in New York City. I support the proposed Governors Island zoning amendment, which will help realize the island's full potential as a vibrant year-round resource for all New Yorkers. This proposal builds on more than two decades of thoughtful planning around the island's future and will generate new opportunities to address many of the city's greatest needs. Nearly a year into the pandemic, the role that parks and open space play as vital public infrastructure has never been clearer. This proposal will further expand the island's parkland and open space while serving as a catalyst to open the island's unique natural environment to 24/7 year-round access. This proposal also has the potential to create thousands of permanent jobs. No small thing for New York, given that the city ended the year with 560,000 fewer jobs than in December 2019. In addition to cultivating the conditions that spark job creation, Governors Island has integrated educational and workforce development opportunities and partnerships into the planning process long before shovels set the ground. While these important initiatives will require a new level of support from city and state leaders, philanthropy, business, and educational institutions like CUNY and the City Department of Education to reach their fullest potential, as well as meaningful commitments from future tenants and vendors, the approach that Governors Island is taking can help ensure the economic benefits that the new development will bring will be shared widely with the community on the island and in neighborhoods across the city. This proposal will also strengthen the island's key role as a hub for arts and culture, bringing new audiences to the island, supporting the development of new spaces to make and present cutting-edge work, and continuing to provide arts education opportunities to fill a major void left by the pandemic, which has taken a heavy toll on arts education funding. And for a city still reeling from the near-total loss of its tourism sector to the pandemic with devastating effects on thousands of New Yorkers who hold accessible jobs in industries from restaurants and retail to ground transportation and accommodations, this proposal can help contribute to the rebound of this vital sector while rooting the city's future appeal in the principles of sustainable design and visitation. Perhaps most important of all, this proposal aims to provide New York City with a leading global hub for interdisciplinary research on climate solutions, building on the island's core assets from its unique geography to innovative educational institutions like the Harbor School to its status as a living incubator of exemplary landscape architecture. This proposal can help Governors Island serve as an even brighter beacon of environmental and economic sustainability in New York Harbor. I'm very pleased to support this proposal, and I encourage the Commission to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Devorkin? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Maria Free.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Maria Free, and I am the Planning and Policy Analyst for the New York Building Congress. And on behalf of the Building Congress, we are proud to support the Trust for Governors Island proposal. At a time of unprecedented economic crisis in our city, this proposal to create thousands of jobs is critical. The New York Building Congress has, for 100 years, advocated for investment in infrastructure, pursued job creation, and promoted preservation and growth in the New York City area. Our association is made up of over 550 organizations comprised of more than a quarter million professionals. Through our members, events, and various committees, we seek to address the critical issues of the building industry and promote the economic and social advancement of our city and its constituents. As we strive to recover from one of the most severe disasters in New York's history, this proposal is the right type of investment for New York to build back even stronger than before. In the short term, it will create over 8,000 jobs, provide career training opportunities, and generate more than $1 billion in economic activity. In the long term, it will help the city tackle the existential threat of climate change. Moreover, this project will turn Governors Island into a public space accessible year-round. By locating a climate center on the island, the trust will be able to expand opportunities for public engagement, education, cultural partnerships, and recreation. In closing, this proposal is an opportunity to invest in economic recovery today and climate solutions tomorrow. The Building Congress strongly supports this project, and we encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Free? Thank you. At this point, I'll note that we are getting close to the end of the public hearing on this matter. And if you haven't registered to speak but have decided during the course of this hearing that you'd like to, please register now, as you must register to be able to speak. And you can find instructions on how to register, whether online or via phone, Our next speaker is Ben Ableman.
Mr. Ableman is not in the room. Just confirming that. Yeah, he's not in the room.
Okay, then we will turn to Sarah Krauthime.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lago and members of the Commission. My name is Sarah Krauthime, and I serve as Vice President for Public Affairs at the Trust for Governors Island. As you heard earlier during our team's presentation, the proposed rezoning of the South Island is a critical step in realizing the island's potential as a year-round destination and in attracting mission-aligned tenants centered on climate education, research, arts and culture, and amenities. Throughout today's hearing, you've heard from a range of voices providing comment on the proposal. The trust is committed to continuing our work with Manhattan Community Board One, our elected officials, and other stakeholders to address concerns raised throughout this process. I wanted to take a moment to provide further clarification and additional information on some of the comments we've heard today. We've heard some unfortunate claims noting that this proposal represents an effort to privatize or eliminate open space on the island. As has been noted in the previous earlier presentation, development will be limited to the eastern and western development zones as outlined in the 2010 master plan, and also both almost entirely fenced off to the public. And development will be limited to existing adaptive reuse opportunities within the historic district. It's important to note that the deed protects parkland on the island in perpetuity, counter to earlier claims heard today. Additionally, through the establishment of the open space subarea through the proposed rezoning, the park will be further protected from development of non-park-related amenity uses to serve the island's visitors today. Any hypothetical further use of this open space for development purposes would require a deed change and additional ULR action. I also wanted to note a few items related to public engagement and oversight regarding this process. Through this process, the trust has remained committed to an open process and robust public engagement. The community board, our elected officials, and community advisory council have been intricately involved over the past decade, providing leadership input on the island's ongoing transformation, including the development of the park, historic district tenants, and plans for development on the southern portion of the island. The community advisory council includes representation from both Manhattan and Brooklyn Community Boards, elected officials representing Manhattan and Brooklyn at the local, state, and federal level, as well as island tenants, arts and cultural organizations, and advocacy orgs focused on open space, environment, workforce development, planning and design, preservation, and economic development. Since September, we've participated in over 15 public meetings on this proposal alone, including with Manhattan and Brooklyn Community Boards. Lastly, I would just like to note that we continue to remain committed to robust community engagement around the island's current and expanded future use. Thank you for your attention and review of this proposal.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Krauthime? Our next speaker is Christopher Tepper.
My name is Chris Tepper, and I'm the Chief Development Officer for the Trust for Governors Island. I'd like to thank you all for your time carefully reviewing this proposal. And I'd also like to thank everyone who provided testimony today and is passionate about the important future of the island. I wanted to use my time to address and clarify three issues raised in earlier testimony and to note that we are very carefully considering all of the concerns and feedback we have received from the community board, borough president, and other stakeholders so far in the process. The first item I wanted to clarify is around parking. As Claire noted, we are committed to keeping the island prioritized for pedestrians and bikes. The proposal does not allow accessory parking in the open space areas at all, only within the two development zones, and that is further limited to 150 spaces per development zone or 300 total for the South Islands. The trust itself has a fleet of approximately 50 vehicles for maintenance, security, and operations, and we see a limited need for additional parking to support our growing operations along with additional spaces needed for university anchor, R&amp;D, and cultural-type uses. This amount of parking is 40% less than what is allowed at the Cornell Tech campus on Roosevelt Island for double the envelope size, and we think that's an appropriate reduction that balances parking needs and the unique character of the island. The second item I wanted to address is about the definition of base plane in the existing proposed text. We wholeheartedly agree with the community board that to create certainty over maximum structure heights on the island, the definition of base plane should be refined. And we committed to amend our proposal to fix the base plane elevation in a letter submitted to the community board on December 22nd and have since been closely working with our colleagues at the Department of City planning to refine that definition. Finally, with respect to the new development's relationship with the historic district, I'd like to note that the trust worked closely with staff at the Landmarks Preservation Commission to integrate a thoughtful transition zone into the zoning framework to limit heights immediately adjacent to the historic district and to set base heights and frontage requirements to be harmonious with the heights of the historic buildings across the Vision Road and to preserve the important pedestrian character of that gateway pathway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Tepper? Well, those are the only speakers who have registered to speak. Ryan, has anyone else?
We have a speaker who's returned to the room, Kirsten Theodos.
Welcome.
She should have the ability to unmute her mic, but doesn't seem like she's able to.
If I could invite Ms. Theodos to submit her testimony in writing, we would welcome it.
Yeah.
And I will also note that we'll call once again to other speakers who were not present when they were called, Daniel Vassini.
No, not in the room.
Okay, and Ben Adelman?
No, not in the room.
Okay, and no other registrants?
No new registrants.
Okay. I will note that the record is going to remain open through Tuesday, the 16th of February 2021, to receive written comments on the draft second supplemental generic environmental impact statement. And with that, the public hearing is closed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, all. Our next item is a citywide item, calendar number 23, N210095Cry, a public hearing in a matter of an application for zoning text amendment concerning zoning for coastal flood resiliency. An additional note, a remote public hearing is being held by the City Planning Commission in conjunction with the above ULR hearing to receive comments related to a draft environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
We will begin by welcoming again Madam Manhattan Borough President, Gail Brewer.
Unfortunately, it looks like the Borough President has left the room. We'll monitor, and if she returns, we'll let you know.
Thank you. I will note that we are not making a presentation on this proposal as it was covered extensively by department staff on Monday during our review session. And we will follow our practice of beginning with speakers in opposition, Sherida Paulson.
Thank you, Chair Lago, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you all hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Sherida Paulson, speaking for the Riverdale Nature Preservancy. We wish to comment based on the presentation that we received back in November at Community Board Eight in the Bronx. And I would like to thank also the extensive presentation made on Monday at your review session. And we compliment the presentation for clearly establishing the goals of the effort and also our local liaison, Jutan Horstman, for his excellent responses to clarify the text of the proposal and its application to our community board. We also appreciate the Commission's and the department's attempt to provide nuanced zoning guidance. And there are aspects of this proposal that we do support. The allowances proposed for permitted obstructions and the modifications to allow for greater flexibility in design within the waterfront areas. However, our consensus was that the zoning text section for Article Six, Chapter Four needs further consideration as its attempt to establish clear as-of-right guidance is more confusing with the relationship to the establishment of a measurement plane to establish height and the confusion regarding the maps, which has been referenced by other community boards, and the need to expand flexibility to underlying zoning limitations. We oppose adopting Article Six, Chapter Five in whole as proposed, but we do support the need to establish a framework that addresses the need to extend permits and reviews due to emergency situations such as the current pandemic. We oppose adopting Article Seven, Chapter Three regarding BSA special permits, and we especially oppose overriding the Special Natural Area District regulations other than those that are related to height, if necessary, to respond to FEMA requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson. Questions? Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker will be Robert Fanuzzi.
Thank you for the chance to address this CPC on the zoning resolution for coastal flooding resiliency. The Bronx Council for Environmental Quality cannot support the proposal at this time. We find that it locks in development policies that have contributed to our current flooding problems by not incorporating the best management features and the best manager practices and design features and incentives that enhance the ability of the natural and built environment to absorb water. We find that the zoning resolution does not prioritize green alternatives and infrastructure. By not doing so, the Department of City Planning is missing a golden opportunity to build floodwater mitigation into the zoning resolution, and by that we mean not just harm to buildings, but actually mitigating floodwaters through the ability of the natural environment to absorb water. We feel that at this present course, the zoning resolution commits waterfronts to hardscape, supports more impervious surfaces throughout the city, and takes us on a road towards divorcing resiliency from sustainability. Bronx Council for Environmental Quality strongly believes that you cannot have resiliency without sustainability, and you cannot have sustainability with a concerted attempt to incorporate green building practices. We also feel that this is a little bit ahead of the game in the sense that we are jumping the gun on the FEMA, new science, new maps that are due in 2021. Those promise broader flood frequencies than the coastal flooding incorporated into this document, the 1% to 2% catastrophic storm percentage. FEMA itself is promising a broader frequency, and we believe that the entire city is endangered by rising seawater and rising storms and should be waiting for the latest from FEMA on that score. Lastly, we feel that this zoning proposal, though it does protect buildings, does not really advance other agencies' sustainability attempts to mitigate stormwater. These include DCP's own waterfront plan, the emerging unified stormwater rules from DEP for new development that'll actually ask building to build new buildings to incorporate water management into their plans, and its green infrastructure program.
Mr. Fanuzzi, I'm afraid your time is up. We would welcome your submitting your written testimony.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. I will.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Fanuzzi? Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Katz.
Hello, Chair Lago and the Commissioners. My name is Jessica Katz. I'm the Executive Director of the Citizens Housing and Planning Council, or CHPC. I am also a member of the Mayor's Waterfront Management Advisory Board. CHPC is delighted to have the opportunity to testify today in favor of the Department of City's planning zoning for coastal flood resiliency text amendment. As a city and across the country, I think we may finally be learning our lesson that climate change isn't just something our grandchildren will worry about in the future. It is here now. Personally, I was working in city government at the Emergency Operations Center during Superstorm Sandy, and I witnessed the devastation firsthand. A crucial lesson that was learned from Sandy is that our zoning codes matter. They shape our built environment in ways that, in this case, can literally save lives, that protect people's homes and livelihoods, help people bounce back faster after an emergency, and prevent future disasters. It is imperative that our zoning reflects the new realities of our environment as sea levels rise. CHPC applauds DCP for the new zoning for coastal flood resiliency text that builds on the emergency zoning changes enacted in the immediate aftermath of Sandy. The Department of City Planning studied how the temporary zoning measures have been working. They embarked on a massive outreach and engagement effort with affected communities to better understand the issues faced in rebuilding after Sandy and the most effective ways to improve the future resiliency of these neighborhoods. They worked closely with the design and development industry, including a team of technical experts on our board, to identify any problems they may have missed, collectively find solutions, and ensure that the application of the text would achieve its stated goals. As one of the organizations involved with the technical consultation, we've been deeply impressed with the collaborative dynamic DCP brought to the development of this text. For example, one concern we had was for the zoning changes to apply to the 500-year flood zone rather than 100-year for increased resiliency into the future. This was not an easy aspect of the text to achieve, and we are so grateful that comments like that one were addressed. DCP staff also responded to feedback we put forward relating to the streetscape implications of the text and many others. Zoning for coastal flood resiliency will help buildings better withstand flooding and storms. It will reduce the time it takes to get New Yorkers back into their homes and reopen their businesses after a disaster. CHPC is very happy to support this text amendment. On a side note, as I sat listening to the previous testimony, we love remote hearings. The city is covered in snow today, and yet we're all here in our homes, able to participate in our local democracy without venturing on the icy streets. Since the pandemic made remote hearings the standard, we've seen participation go way up. On one project, I've gotten feedback from NYCHA residents on needs for their development while they sat in dentist waiting rooms as they drove home from work or cooked dinner for their kids. These residents would never have had the luxury of sitting in a hearing room in Lower Manhattan for hours waiting for their turn.
Thank you for that, Ms. Katz. Questions? Well, thank you for testifying remotely and reminding us of what lies outside our windows. Our next speaker will be John Baker.
Mr. Baker's in the room. He can unmute his mic, should be able to do that now.
Hear me. There we go.
Yes.
Thanks for your patience. Good afternoon. My name is John Baker, and I'm a policy manager at the Center for New York City Neighborhoods. I'd like to thank the members of the City Planning Commission for the opportunity to speak and supported the zoning for coastal flood resiliency plan. The Center promotes and protects affordable homeownership in New York's. The middle and working-class families are able to live in strong, thriving communities. Since our founding in 2008, our network has assisted more than 100,000 homeowners. Our clients are over 60% people of color with an average household income of $38,000. The Center, in partnership with the New York State Governor's Office of Storm Recovery and the New York City Mayor's Office of Resiliency, operates FloodHelpNewYork.org and provides disaster recovery and resiliency services to New York City's low- and moderate-income homeowners. The Center applauds the zoning for coastal flood resiliency plan. The proposal will increase community resiliency and save homeowners money on their flood insurance premiums. These progressive changes will remove obstacles to neighborhood resiliency, not only for homeowners and their tenants who are currently at risk of flooding, but also communities that will face additional flood risk by 2050. As outlined in the proposal, three-quarters of the lots in New York City's floodplain are zoned for low-density housing, and these changes would have a profound effect on the ability of thousands of those residents to adapt to climate change. The proposed changes are flexible and will allow residents to make long-term investments in their homes to help lower their risk of flooding, as well as to lower their flood insurance premiums right now. At the Center, our work developing FloodHelpNewYork.org aims to help New York City homeowners understand the risk of flooding and how that risk will change due to the effects of climate change. By including the 0.2% annual chance floodplain, this plan complements our work and helps ensure that New York City homeowners can adapt to climate change in the long term, not just in the immediate future. These zoning changes will allow homeowners to undertake badly-needed retrofits, such as raising their homes or mechanicals. And in addition, these changes would position New York City to be a national leader in actually adapting to climate change. The Center's vision of homeowners adapting to the threat of climate change relies on these zoning changes being adopted. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Questions? Our next speaker will be Catherine Heinz.
Doesn't look like Ms. Heinz is in the room anymore.
Okay, then we will move on to Robert Freidenberg.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to offer this testimony. My name is Robert Freidenberg, and I am the Vice President for Energy and Environment at Regional Plan Association, an organization that for nearly a century has sought to advance and advocate for research-based solutions to long-term problems. As a highly-developed, dense waterfront city with 520 miles of shoreline, New York City is centered directly in the crosshairs of the climate crisis. In addition to the other climate impacts of heat and increased precipitation, the slow, steady, and accelerating rise of sea level threatens to permanently inundate neighborhoods and infrastructure while deepening the reach and destruction of more frequent and intense coastal storms. Put another way, New York City faces a challenging and dubious future, uncomfortable at best, wholly uncertain at worst. Faced with these worsening impacts, the city must make critical decisions around existing and further development in flood hazard and future development in flood hazard zones if it is to continue to thrive while safeguarding its residents. In RPA's own fourth regional plan, we called for a combination of resiliency strategies, including zoning changes, investments in engineered and nature-based solutions, and strategic buyouts, among others, to adequately adapt to our changing coastline. In this spirit, we join you today to offer our support for the action to amend the zoning resolution of the City of New York to modify its flood resiliency provisions with the proposed zoning for coastal flood resiliency. This amendment comes at a tenuous moment, standing in the long wake of Hurricane Sandy and our continued recovery from it, while facing a future of rapidly rising seas and increased flooding. It is clear the city must take action to become more resilient and face the impacts of climate change head-on. Achieving resiliency means having the ability to look in two directions at once: backward to the disaster we are recovering from, making sure to learn from the difficult lessons it brought, and forward toward future catastrophic impacts, which can look very different from those in the past. I'm pleased to say that the amendment before you succeeds in doing that, incorporating the lessons learned from Sandy's devastation to bolster support for post-disaster recovery, while also promoting long-term resiliency by allowing precautionary standards and resiliency features for buildings in the current and future flood zone, as well as zoning and design rules that factor in sea level rise. Further, prohibiting the construction of new nursing homes in high-risk flood areas represents a small, but importantly, a strong overture for future development restrictions. These are common sense updates that acknowledge the reality that there will be more disasters to recover from across a wider area, and we must take additional and meaningful steps today to prepare for worsening impacts that are to come. And while this amendment may help to reduce risk for many, it will fully eliminate long-term risk for none, and in order to have its greatest impact, it will need to be paired with tools that help building owners and developers pay for the modifications it allows. Still, it is a very good, well-thought-out and tested next step that should be approved, yet there is still much to be done. So while we enthusiastically urge the Planning Commission to adopt this amendment, we also encourage you to advance beyond these measures. This amendment can help.
Thank you, Mr. Robert Freidenberg. I'm afraid that your time is up, but we would welcome your submitting your written testimony.
Thank you.
Questions? Again, thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Wilson.
Thank you, Chair Lago, and good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Eric Wilson. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Resiliency, where I serve as the Deputy Director for Land Use and Buildings. I speak today in support of the proposed actions. As you know, adapting New York City to climate change will require substantial public and private sector actions over coming decades. While much attention is paid to large coastal infrastructure projects, we must deploy multiple lines of defense and utilize all of the tools that are available to us. Our building and zoning codes are primary levers in our evolving climate adaptation toolkit. We must ensure these documents include both rigorous standards and flexible provisions for new construction and retrofits within the coastal floodplain. We strongly support the zoning for coastal flood resiliency proposal, which exemplifies this approach. As we design policies that enable resilient construction and retrofits, we must also assist property owners navigate the technical and financial challenges of implementing resiliency improvements. To partially address these needs, MOR partners with the Center for New York City Neighborhoods to deploy the FloodHelp New York program, which includes technical resources on flood risk, retrofit strategies, and flood insurance. Through this program, which is accessible at FloodHelpNewYork.org, eligible homeowners can enroll for free services, including a home resiliency audit and financial counseling. Some property owners may also be eligible for a free backwater valve, which helps prevent sewer backups into one's basement. Another resource is the Home Fix program started by our colleagues at HPD. Home Fix assists low- and moderate-income property owners citywide with basic home repairs, including some that reduce flooding risks like backwater valves. In addition to these programs, we're working with state partners to expand the existing PACE loan program to include low-cost, low-interest loans for resiliency improvements to commercial and multifamily buildings. As you may know, at present, the PACE program only applies to sustainability retrofits that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We would be expanding this to include resiliency retrofits. The needs for technical and financial assistance for resilient construction are only growing, and there is much, much more work to be done. We certainly look forward to new partnerships at the federal level and will continue to collaborate with federal agency staff and elected officials. However, none of this would be possible without the basic regulatory reforms that are included in the proposed zoning for coastal flood resiliency. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify in support of this proposal, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Questions for Mr. Wilson? Thank you for testifying. Oh, Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, Eric. It's good to hear from you, and I'm asking you this question because you may not be the right person to ask, but I think you might have a perspective on this. One of the issues that's come up is parking and automobiles on the island. Does the Mayor's Office have a position or perspective on that as it relates to just bigger sustainability questions?
Related to the zoning for coastal flood resiliency proposal and parking specifically?
Yeah, I mean, parking, accessibility, automobile access, I see as a sustainability question writ large, and you, Aaron, may not be well-positioned to respond to this question, but is there, does the Mayor's Office have a position on the allowance of vehicles and the parking that has been raised as an issue already?
We have less of a position on the parking issues, per se, than really the form that is the building forms that are enabled by this proposal that would allow buildings to be built in a way that's more consistent with flood resiliency standards. I think we're more agnostic on parking allowances, but instead more focused on the building form constraints.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Commissioners.
At this point, I'll note that we are getting close to the end of this public hearing, and if you haven't registered to speak but have decided to do so during the course of the hearing, please register, as registration is required. You can find instructions on how to register, whether online or via phone, at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. Our next speaker is Courtney Worrell.
Madam Chair, I want to just note for your information that the Borough President is back in the room.
Oh, then with apologies to Courtney Worrell, if we could call upon Madam Borough President Gail Brewer. Welcome back.
Hi, this is Connor Allerton on behalf of Gail Brewer.
Oh, I'm sorry. At that point, if you could sign up in your own name, and we will get you in order. And so we will then proceed with Courtney Worrell.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Courtney Worrell, President of the Waterfront Alliance. The Waterfront Alliance works to ensure the health and resilience of waterfronts in the New York City metropolitan region. Through our Rise to Resilience Coalition, we call for urgent policy, governance, and financial changes that will protect our region from the risk of climate. Through our Waterfront Edge Design Guidelines Program, which is the WEDGE program, we are shifting the market towards resilient, sustainable, and accessible waterfront development. For these reasons and more, we are pleased to support zoning for coastal flood resiliency. While Waterfront Alliance is in strong support of the new zoning, it should remain very clear that zoning is just one part of a set of solutions that are needed for New York City's resiliency. We continue to advocate for the comprehensive legislation and regulatory solutions to the effects of climate change set forth in our Rise to Resilience policy platform, and we also push for the funding that is needed for many of the changes that will be allowed through this zoning. The current 100-year floodplain encompasses 20% of the land in New York City. This includes close to 400,000 permanent residents. These neighborhoods, uses, and geomorphologies are extremely diverse, making the need for flexible but targeted land use policies critical for adapting to future risks. And let's be clear that the city will face two and a half feet of sea level rise by 2050, and because of these changes in the flood zone, the number of people, businesses, and land in the flood zone will. land in the flood zone will greatly increase. We support the zoning for the following reasons. It expands the 500-year flood plain, which increases the area for which the resiliency provisions apply. And this allows building owners in the 500-year flood plain proactively build or retrofit according to new resilience standards, and this will encompass an area of more than 780,000 residents. The zoning changes will reduce barriers to the use of nature-based resiliency strategies such as soft shorelines, which reduce tidal energy at the waterfront and increase habitat for an ecologically productive and healthy shoreline. And we are extremely pleased that the zoning is the product of robust community input that happened after Hurricane Sandy. This reflects the widespread demand for future-focused resiliency measures. We are also so pleased that 2,500 New Yorkers participated from all five boroughs, and there were many creative engagement strategies that were used in order to reach them, and this is what is so important in the future. So for all of these reasons, we support and give our full support to the zoning for coastal flood resiliency. It's a positive and impactful step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worrell. Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Aleah Sumro.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Aleah Sumro, and I'm the Manhattan Fellow in Land Use Law at the Municipal Arts Society. We will be submitting longer comments before the deadline. The Municipal Arts Society of New York recognizes the Department of City Planning's Zoning for Coastal Flood Resiliency text amendment as a necessary step toward making the city more resilient in the face of climate change impacts. However, for this zoning proposal to be truly comprehensive and equitable, the city must coordinate across local, state, and federal agencies to ensure that the proposal is supported with proper funding mechanisms. As proposed, the zoning shifts the burden of retrofitting affected buildings to individual property owners, leaving the city's vulnerable coastal areas subject to both sea level rise and market forces. While zoning is only one planning tool without clear funding mechanisms to assist property owners, the stage could be set for a piecemeal approach that does not comprehensively improve the city's coastal risk. We agree with Manhattan Community Board One and Borough President Brewer that DCP must work with other local, state, and federal agencies to formulate a plan to financially assist qualified property owners who would utilize the provisions of this zoning amendment. Without this investment, financially vulnerable property owners will become more at risk to future storms, sea level rise, and potential foreclosures. While we think it is wise for DCP to include properties in the 500-year flood plain in this proposal, we do not agree with DCP's reliance on the New York City Panel on Climate Change's high-range sea level rise projection for the 2050s, a mere 30 years from now, as the benchmark. In comparison, the Boston Planning and Development Agency, which has introduced its own coastal flood resilience overlay district for areas of the city in the 100-year flood plain, uses 2070 projections with 40 inches of sea level rise as its standard. We recommend DCP use NPCC projections for the 2080s, given the vast scale of potential climate change impacts in the city. The city must also begin working with the state and federal governments over the next several years to develop an equitable voluntary citywide buyout program for properties in vulnerable coastal areas modeled off of the New York State Office of Storm Recovery's Post-Superstorm Sandy Program. DCP should expand upon the areas currently covered by the Special Coastal Risk District to protect homeowners living in high-risk areas. Although we support the provision prohibiting new or enlarged nursing home facilities within the 100-year flood plain, we think that additional new buildings housing vulnerable populations such as hospitals be restricted from the flood plain. Because of the potential impacts to historic districts, we also agree with Borough President Brewer's recommendation that DCP requires special permit approval from the CPC. MAS recognizes DCP's efforts in developing a zoning framework that encourages flood resiliency. However, for this proposal, this proposal does not comprehensively address issues interrelated with climate resiliency, such as equity and financing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Worrell. And I'll note for the commissioners that we had the pleasure of having Aleah as an intern in our division when she was in law school. So good to see you again. Commissioner Levin.
So see, I don't know if you were listening when Mr. Wilson from the Mayor's Office of Resiliency testified, and he described a number of programs that were available to help homeowners retrofit their properties in compliance with these or as permitted by this new zoning text. Are those adequate measures? Is there something else the MAS would be recommending in terms of funding support?
I think we think those measures are adequate, but we just urge the city to continue providing more funding mechanisms, especially working with the new administration at the federal level and the state agencies.
Okay, good, thank you. I think we all recognize that it's one thing to have the words on the paper, but it's another thing to get people to actually buy into them and take the matters to protect their properties. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Ms. Sumro.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Alexandra Swashburn. Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies, Commissioner Bernie, if Ms. Sumro is still on.
No worries, thank you. You know, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought what you, Aleah, what you were referring to was more of a long-term planning perspective, in the sense that, you know, I think the current resiliency proposals are all well and good, but they tend to be relatively short-term proposals. And as we heard during the Urban East presentation and so on, we're talking at best about a couple of mortgage cycles before we get some serious sea level problems. And while two mortgage cycles sounds like a long way away, planning takes a long time. So I'm wondering, is that really your position, that you're really thinking about what do we do when these resiliency measures are no longer adequate because of more permanent sea level rise?
Yes, that is exactly what we're thinking, is what happens in the long term and how can we comprehensively think about this plan and what will happen after 2050? But we'd be happy to discuss this more with you.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Sumro? Okay, this time I don't think I'm missing a raised hand, so we will move on to Alexandra Swashburn.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I'm actually testifying on behalf of the Resilient Red Hook Committee of Red Hook, Brooklyn, which contains two DCP alums, myself and also Thaddeus Palowski. And we both send our fondest best wishes to our former colleagues and current commissioners, and just wish this were in person. Hopefully someday soon it will be. But thank you again for the opportunity to testify, and we would like to testify in support of these measures, but with a few qualifications. So our goal in achieving resilience in Red Hook is a lively street, and that requires ground floor uses, of course, other than parking. So our overall message is, please make dry floodproof uses easier. Requiring professionals, the regulations are complex, and when applied to small rowhouse lots, they require hiring an engineer or lawyer to evaluate and expedite. This added cost may make small homeowner improvements impossible, we fear, and we hope it can be addressed through the programs perhaps mentioned earlier. Here's an example, BSA for a doctor's office. Well, having the ability to dry floodproof for a professional office on the ground floor is good, it's great, but why does it require further approval? Could this be made out of right? Could these be streamlined and removed from regulations that might be overspecific, given the scale of the intervention? Two other examples of this are in the dry floodproof credit. Why is 13 feet tall for a first floor a requirement? How many rowhouses actually have that? Similarly, the 30-foot depth limiting the ground floor use. Existing rowhouses, especially those in Red Hook, have different depths, and the entire ground floor should be eligible. So please consider in these specific cases how we could streamline or perhaps even remove some of these regulations and therefore broaden the eligibility and make slightly easier to, especially at the scale of a single homeowner, to make these resilient improvements. Now, a bit of editorial comment from the committee. Amsterdam. We all look at Amsterdam in the Netherlands as a model of a beautiful and resilient cities, but how many buildings like those in Amsterdam could we build under our code here? Well, none. But how does Amsterdam survive and thrive? Well, it does so because the Netherlands takes on the burden of flood resilience at the national and regional level, allowing individual houses to be diverse. The NYC approach is to put the burden on the individual. Please, we ask, reinvigorate neighborhood-scale flood protection. We are Red Hook. We have been flooded, so we know what our house is.
I'm afraid that your time is up, but we would welcome your submitting the written testimony. It is great having this be a DCP alum fest. Questions for Mr. Swashburn? Well, thank you, and we will move on to our next alum, Thad Palowski.
Hello, commissioners. Hello, Commissioner Lago. Thank you for having me. I'm with Alex on the Resilient Red Hook Committee. I'm also the Managing Director of the Center for Resilient Cities and Landscapes at Columbia University, where we help cities around the world make plans for climate change adaptation. And I'm also former urban designer at City Planning. And after Hurricane Sandy, I worked very closely with a lot of property owners in the Build It Back program and other situations, and saw the enormous frustration that people had as they struggled to recover from Hurricane Sandy and understand all of the complexity of FEMA flood regulations, building code, zoning, and sometimes working at cross purposes. I also saw firsthand how city planning staff really worked closely in a very deep listening process over many years, very detail-oriented with the designers, with the property owners, with the homeowners, with people in neighborhoods, in a very co-creative process. And I think that there was enormous thoughtfulness and creativity and hard work that went into this proposal. In some ways, I think it's a model for how planning could happen in the future and something that I'm very proud to teach my students about and teach other cities about as we go forward. But I agree with everything that all others have said, that this is just the beginning. Climate change adaptation and sustainability, both mitigating our carbon footprint and also making our neighborhoods more prepared for climate change, is just, we're just at the beginning of this work, and we know from this last year of the pandemic how the intersectional risks that our communities face are so much more challenging now. But this is a move in very much the right direction, and I just congratulate the city planning staff for their very thoughtful work.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Palowski? Well, thank you for testifying. Our next speaker is Connor Allerton. Welcome back.
Good morning, Chair Lago and commissioners. Thank you for having me back. My name is Connor Allerton, and I am a staff planner for the Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, here to deliver a statement on her behalf regarding the zoning for coastal flood resiliency citywide text amendment. Resiliency is an important and timely priority for New York City. The impacts of climate change on a coastal city like New York, from rising sea levels to increasingly frequent coastal storms, necessitate a swift and proactive resiliency framework that is holistic, cohesive, and adaptable in response to climate change. A resiliency framework must be multifaceted and require multitude of resources, the coordination of city agencies, and support from state and federal government. This text amendment is an example of the collaboration that is necessary to achieve a citywide framework intending to facilitate the resiliency goals set forth by the building code and utilizing zoning as a key, but not sole tool required to achieve resiliency. A text amendment such as this is timely and necessary. However, the review process has revealed contention over the details. These concerns must be addressed by the city in order to make our building stock resilient. Manhattan is home to an array of historic districts and special zoning districts, each with its own regulations regarding height, bulk, street wall, design, and other elements of the built environment. These districts are very intentional in their zoning restrictions and allowances, and this text amendment would take precedent over many regulations that protect these districts. I'm concerned that this change could compromise the character of these districts and the physical changes brought about by new construction. It's in the best interest of the city to implement measures to explicitly protect and preserve these districts as they exist. Additionally, a major component of this application is the facilitation of floodproofing, both dry and wet, for building within the flood plain. While a building can opt into either type of floodproofing, the two differ in their treatment of the street wall and frontage. Dry floodproofing promotes a consistent and accessible street wall, while wet floodproofing often results in elevated ground floors with little connection to the street and sidewalk, and an inconsistent street wall. While both types should be implemented, dry floodproofing should be required as much as possible, particularly in high-density residential and commercial areas, in order to maintain a vibrant and permeable ground floor without sacrificing resiliency standards. And finally, this proposed text amendment does little to differentiate zoning provisions between new and existing buildings. According to the building code, new development would already be required to apply such resiliency standards in the flood plain, and thus should not be given zoning incentives to do so. Existing buildings should uniquely qualify for such zoning changes. This would incentivize retrofits that are not mandated but would result in a much more resilient building stock. I believe that this higher degree of resiliency would be equal to or greater than the resiliency of new construction. Our planning must emphasize the resiliency of existing buildings, particularly small properties and their owners, and meet the challenges that arise with such an effort. And I'll submit a fuller testimony after this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allerton. Our next speaker is Lori Schuman.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Commission. My name is Lori Schuman. I am the National Director for Enterprise Community Partners' Resiliency and Disaster Recovery Work around the nation. Enterprise Communities Partners is a national affordable housing nonprofit. We've been around for about 40 years, and we believe that safe housing is the critical underpinning of resident and community stability. We believe the City Planning Commission and the City Council should approve the Department of City Planning's proposal, zoning for coastal flood resiliency, to preserve and protect stable housing for generations of vulnerable New Yorkers. We know that existing shocks and stresses in our nation have been deeply exacerbated by the cascading effects of climate change, such as flooding events and the global storm that the COVID-19 pandemic has created. This collision has revealed to us that we need to have ordinances and programs in place, such as a zoning for coastal flood resiliency, to ensure that our systems reduce the fragility of our communities, particularly those in the flood plain of New York City. We know that thousands of low-income New Yorkers depend on affordable housing, public housing, Section 8, Section 202, naturally occurring. All of these units are so critical so that we can ensure a stably housed workforce and a stable and sustainable New York City. And as we are seeing in COVID-19, housing is also a shelter to safeguard the health and well-being of New Yorkers. New York City's flood plain is home to 55,000 regulated homes. Housing in the flood plain includes a variety of housing for affordability for so many New Yorkers, and as thousands of households are held captive by COVID-19, we know that this is a critical refuge that we need to protect, and we believe that the zoning proposal put forward by the Department of City Planning is the right way for us to move, to build and retrofit this housing, because we need to preserve what we have. It's very difficult, as we know, working for over 40 years in New York City, to build affordable housing, and frankly, it's very difficult around the nation to build affordable housing. New York has an important opportunity at this point to transform extant policies and create forward-facing supports, and we believe this is the right legislation and the right program to put forward, invest in, and as well, invest in the good work that's happening from the City Planning Department, as well as the Mayor's Office of Resiliency and Recovery. Thank you so much, and thank you for your leadership at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Schuman. Questions? Thank you. I'll return to someone who was not present at the time, Catherine Heinz, in the event that she's returned to the room.
No, she has not returned.
And has anyone else signed up?
We have no further speakers signed up on this item.
Okay, the record on this item is going to remain open through Tuesday, 16th of February 2021, to receive written comments on the draft environmental impact statement. And the public hearing is closed.
Borough Brooklyn, calendar numbers 24 and 25, CD 15, calendar number 24, C 210130, CMK, calendar number 25. twenty-four, C two-one-zero, one-three-zero, CMK, calendar number twenty-five, N two-one-zero, one-three-one, Z R K. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning resilient neighborhoods, Gertrude Beach.
I have it indicated that there are no speakers on this item, and I would just ask Ryan if you could confirm that.
Yeah, we're there are no for there are no speakers signed up on this.
Okay, then the public hearing is closed, and I would say the average length of our public hearings on items today has just dropped markedly. On to the next one.
For Brooklyn, calendar number twenty-six, CD fifteen, N two-one-zero, one-three-two, Z R K. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning resilient neighborhoods, Special Cheatshead Bay District.
Our speaker is Elizabeth Malone.
Ms. Malone is no longer in the room.
Okay, then we will move on to Karen Blondell.
Here's the Ms. Blondell is no longer in the room.
Okay, then Lori Schuman, welcome back. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I am very happy to to discuss our continued work to promote climate-safe housing in the city of New York and that the good work that the City Planning Department has done to promote this 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 effort, zoning effort, is something that should be considered by the by the Commission. Because really what this will do is ensure that the most vulnerable workers, the most vulnerable New Yorkers, and particularly looking at low-income community members that cannot afford the high high cost of housing, are able to stay in the floodplain and in the communities that many of them have been in for generations. We also know that it is very difficult to build affordable housing once it is lost. And so we're talking about specifically multifamily housing with renters, which is sort of the bread and butter housing stock of New York City, as well as single-family homes that need to be supported. And ways of supporting this housing is by ensuring that zoning proposals, such as the one that's in front of you, is 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 going to be implemented. And then further than that, further afield, we need to ensure that there are programs set up to ensure education is provided to community members about the ways that they can mitigate risk to their housing facilities and housing owners of multifamily buildings have the the technical assistance that they need to ensure that their housing is able to get retrofitted with the right the right solutions. We worked on Enterprise Community Partners, worked on very closely with the city of New York, a very forward-looking program called Flood Help New York that actually did do that kind of assistance and provided TA to housing owners and building owners to ensure that they knew what the problems were in their buildings so that they could fix those problems and retrofit their facilities from flooding, from extreme heat, from extreme wind, and other issues that are facing the community of housing. It's worth noting that our new administration, the Biden-Harris administration, is fully behind this kind of forward-looking work, and there would be no better city than New York to step forward with a progressive solution that can be scaled across the nation and used in other coastal communities like Miami, Norfolk, DC, to help them safeguard their housing stock. So again, I commend the Commission on your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Schuman? Thank you. Ryan, I don't show any other speakers on this item?
And confirming there's no further speakers signed up for this item.
Okay, so this public hearing is closed.
Last item today, Borough of Queens, calendar number twenty-seven, CD ten, C two-one-zero, one-three-three, CMQ. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning resilient neighborhoods, Old Howard Beach.
Our first speaker is Roger Gendron.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Roger Gendron. I am the I am a member of the Queens Community Board Ten, and I have been the president of the New Hamilton Beach Civic Association since February 2012, eight months prior to Superstorm Sandy. And I am speaking today in support of the zoning coastal, the zoning for coastal resiliency. In May of 2017, after working closely with the Department of City Planning, I testified before the City Planning Commission regarding the then-proposed rezoning of Hamilton Beach. Department of City of Planning listened to what our community goals and wishes were and made sure that they were included in the old Hamilton, the old Howard Beach, Hamilton Beach, and Broad China Resilient Neighborhood Studies. Today, I'm here to testify in support of the proposed city resiliency plan, and specifically the Old Howard Beach rezoning. That's aimed at preparing flood zones for extreme weather. The proposed rezoning is something that the residents of Howard Beach support. Old Howard Beach has always been prone to tidal flooding and severely affected by coastal storms, of course, the worst to date being Superstorm Sandy. The neighborhood saw tidal waters reach over six foot in some areas. Each and every home in Old Howard Beach was affected by the floodwaters during that during Sandy. And by 2050, sea level rise is expected to be as much as thirty inches higher in New York's coastal area. And by 2021-00, some models predict the coast could see up to six foot of sea level rise. The current zoning, which would allow for even more multiple semi multifamily semi-detached buildings, could ultimately put more residents in danger. The Hamilton Beach rezoning also included a provision that stopped overnight facilities from being built, and I believe this should also be included in the Howard Beach rezoning as well. Many streets in Old Howard Beach flood during coastal storms, as evident just by the nor'easter that we got hit with over the weekend. The majority of Old Howard Beach lies south of 157th Avenue, and during Superstorm Sandy, the entire area was flooded. That flooding severely hindered efforts to evacuate residents during Sandy. And if allowed, the addition of multi-bed overnight facilities would only put more people in harm's way. In the aftermath of Superstorm Sandy, storm resilience has become a very important issue. A zoning that would assist homeowners in making their home safer from future flooding should be in place. The citywide zoning for coastal resiliency is aimed at removing zoning barriers that prevent resilient construction and retrofitting of buildings that fall in a floodplain. The changes to zoning laws would expand the areas where the rules are applicable. The Old Howard Beach portion of rezoning would affect about fifty blocks total and approximately a thousand buildings, and more importantly, would make it easier to elevate and retrofit current homes with flooding protection measures more so than homes that are semi-detached or attached and have shared walls. And I just want to thank everybody for the time, for your time in letting me address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Questions? Then, Ryan, I will check with you to see if there is anyone else who has signed up on this matter?
Nope, there are no further speakers on this item.
Okay, so then this public hearing is closed, and I would ask if there are any other matters before the Commission?
Just a minor housekeeping item, if I may, Chair Lago.
Please.
For those of you who were unable or did not wish to testify and submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP's web page or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st Floor, New York, New York, 1027 line.
Okay, and with that, I'll thank the Commissioners for an over four-hour hearing. Fortunately, lots of interesting issues and great testimony from all corners of the public. So thank you all, and enjoy the snow.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Time is 2:08 PM.